Okay, let's get going. Good afternoon, everyone. Let's call this meeting to order. It's a regular meeting of Boca Raton's Community Redevelopment Agency. Today is Monday, September 8th, 2025. The time is 1:30 PM. Welcome, everyone. Let's call the meeting to order. Please, everyone, rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. Ms. Sittins, please call the roll.
Chair Victor.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Thankful to be here.
Commissioner Drucker.
Here.
Commissioner Nakless.
Here.
Commissioner Singer.
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brown, are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments this afternoon. Thanks.
Very good. Are there, uh, there are no minutes to review today, and there are no presentations today, nor are there any quasi judicial or related public hearings. So we will turn to the time for public requests. If anyone wishing to speak about the downtown CRA, you'll have up to three minutes. Please state your name and address. We've received one card from Gary Lanell, who I've talked to. His comments are more appropriate for the workshop, and he will come back at that time. Anyone else about the CRA public request? Seeing no one, we'll close the time for public requests and move on to resolutions and regular public hearings. Ms. Sittins.
Resolution number 2025-04 CRA, a resolution of the Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency amending the CRA application review and processing fee schedule by updating the pre-permit urban design deposit based on the value of the project, repealing resolution number 2024-04 CRA, providing for severability, providing for appeal, providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Arlene Cheese Nelson, the DDRI Planning Analyst, will make the presentation on resolution 2025-04 CRA.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, members of the board. For the record, I'm Arlene Cheese Nelson, DDRI Planning Analyst. Before you this afternoon is resolution number 2025-04 CRA, which amends the CRA application review and processing fee schedule. This resolution changes the CRA application fee schedule by updating the pre-permit urban design review deposit, which is currently $2,500. We're changing that so that it's based on the value of the project, $500 for projects with a value of up to $5,000, $500,000, and $1,000 for projects with a value of more than $500,000. Repealing this previous fee, I'm sorry, repealing the previous fees for one consolidated schedule. If approved, changes will become effective on October 10, October 1st, 2025. Uh, this slide shows the changes that will be made to this, the fee schedule. You'll see the $2,500 being struck through, and in place we'll have $500 and $1,000 based on the cost of the project. Staff recommends adoption of resolution number 2025-04 CRA as presented. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Just one quick question, uh, Mr. Brown, or, um, what is the basis for the change in the rates?
Uh, we have a number of very small projects coming in, and the, uh, the $2,500 has been difficult for some of our applicants, and there've been requests to have this reviewed.
So basically, the smaller projects pay a smaller fee.
Correct.
As they get larger, they would pay a larger fee.
That's correct.
It's a more detailed review, that type of thing.
It's the same review. It's just, generally, the, um, urban design reviewer doesn't take a whole lot of time, it doesn't take a whole lot of time to review pre-permit, um, applications. So for a customer to put down $2,500, and we're basically paying out maybe $200 or $500, and then the applicant gets a refund, the refund process is a little bit lengthy. So, um, to reduce the hardship on the customer, the request was made.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Thompson?
And just to follow up on that, if I could, Mr. Chair, it would, seems like it took a bunch of staff time to, in order to calculate the refund and to work with the applicant. Is that right?
That's correct.
Right. Thank you. Anything else? Anything else on this side? Nope. Uh, seeing no other questions from my commissioners, we'll open up the public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this issue may come up to the microphone and have up to three minutes. Going once, twice. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion and second to approve resolution 2025-04-CRA.
So moved.
So moved. Mr. Thompson, second. Ms. Drucker. Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Sittins.
Nakless.
Yes.
Victor.
Yes.
Singer.
Yes.
Drucker.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sittins, we'll ask you to continue with resolution 25-05.
Resolution number 2025-05 CRA, a resolution of the Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency considering proposed amendments to the amended downtown plan to update the marketing policy, add a community policing policy, and update Section 11 planned services and infrastructure improvements, providing for appeal, providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Cheese Nelson will also present resolution 2025-05 CRA.
Thank you. Resolution number 2025-05 CRA recommends approval of ordinance 5748 amending the amended downtown plan. Just to give you a little background, pursuant to Florida Statute 163387, TIF funds remaining at the end of the fiscal year is permitted to be used for redevelopment projects, providing they are consistent with the amended downtown plan. As such, updates to the plan are currently needed. The proposed amendments will update marketing policy 1.2, add community policy 1.4, update Section 11 planned services and infrastructure improvements by removing the downtown walkability enhancements and metered parking projects as they have been completed, eliminating the Meisner Park Amphitheater roof replacement project, and adding a new project for all the, uh, the improvements at Meisner Park Amphitheater, adding a new project for the relocation of a historic public building, and removing the reference to the fiscal year from each project. The ordinance was introduced at the August 26th City Council meeting and will be heard at the September 9th City Council meeting. Staff recommends approval of this resolution and adoption of ordinance number 5748. This concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yes, thank you. And just a quick follow up. Um, Ms. Nelson or Mr. Zervis, um, since we're reserving the CRA TIF funds, um, for projects that are still in the planning stages, it is possible that we might not, uh, given what happens with certain things in the downtown, we might not need certain funds. We might redeploy them in certain areas, like if we choose not to relocate the Singing Pines Building or something like that. We're reserving them to make sure that we're covered for this fiscal year, but we could change those functions, if, change those deployments if we need to. Is that correct?
That's correct, Chair Victor. The, the funds could be, um, reallocated through the, through a plan amendment and through the budgeting process.
Thank you. Any other questions?
May I, please, and just to follow up on that same point, in the event that the Singing Pines Building is determined later, for whatever reason, not in, to be in need of relocation, how would we address that? Let me, let me clarify. How would we address that change as it relates to the updates to this marketing policy and what we're contemplating today?
We would probably need to just amend the plan, removing that project.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we will open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come up to the microphone. You'll have up to three minutes. Mr. Pearlman, you are recognized.
Uh, before I speak, can you please pull up the slide on the, um, the amendments to the infrastructure improvements? John Pearlman, 498 Northeast 8th Street.
Thank you.
On August 25th, with the CRA, uh, meeting, there was a staff presentation made on the finances of the CRA. In that presentation, and it ties back to the infrastructure and planned infrastructure here as being discussed today, it was revealed that the capital outlay of the CRA is going to be increasing 40 times from 2024 to 2026. The capital out, the capital outlay was roughly over $1 million in 2024. In fiscal year 26, it's anticipated that the capital outlay is over $40 million. That's a, that is massive. That's a massive change. Additionally, there's huge amounts of funds over, um, approximately 80, approximately, um, 80 or not, between 80 to 90 million dollars of funds being appropriated in the next three years for, quote, "specific redevelopment projects." These are drastic changes to the CRA expense budget. Very little detail, virtually no detail was given in that, in that presentation. I'm, I'm looking at slide 13 right now of the presentation made on August 25th. You know, you're, you're listing here some various infrastructure projects that, that you're, you know, you're updating sections, you're, you know, adding stuff or removing stuff, modifying it. The public needs a specific list, a specific expense list, an expense budget list, of all projects between fiscal years 24, 25, and 26, given these drastic, drastic, uh, expense changes. Uh, we, you, you need to put that and, and provide that to the public, along with the exact amounts of money that each project is going to be ta, gonna be needed for, how much money you're gonna be spending on each of these projects. And again, that was not, that was not revealed, or even gone into any detail on, on the August 25th presentation. So, one slide like this, talking a little bit about various things, which, by the way, we know that the Historic Preservation Board designated and did not, said that the site of the Singing Pines Building is a historic site. Therefore, the building cannot be moved. So now you're adding a new project for the relocation of a historic building, and we know about the ordinance coming forward, uh, tomorrow night to, to undo what they've said. But that, that aside, we need all of the, we need all of the expenses for every single line item of expense of the CRA from fiscal years 24, 25, and 26. Please, Mr. Singer and staff, send out an email with those line items. Thank you.
Thanks, you. It is public request. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, welcome to speak. Seeing no one, we'll close the time for public requests. I don't know, Mr. Brown, if you wanna, or Mr. Zervis, you wanna take up Mr. Pearlman's comment at this time?
Request for information. We will provide the information.
Thank you. Likewise, um, as you know, the CRA is an audited agency, um, and every year, all those projects, every expenditure is audited as well. So I think there is an idea where you can look in terms of the budget going forward, and we can look at, at the audit going in reverse. Uh, and I think Mr. Brown and, uh, Mr. Zervis and the financial team can provide a enormous amount of detail as to the exact expenditures on those things as well.
Mr. Victor?
Yes, of course.
I only took, Mr. Pearlman, so Singing Pines' original site was not where it's at today. The ordinance that's coming before us tomorrow is to designate the actual house in order for us to protect the house itself and mark it as a historic designated area. So I just wanna make sure that there's so much misinformation that we continue to clarify for the residents and the community. So Singing Pines was moved in 1976 to the site where it currently is located, and tomorrow night's ordinance, and Mr. Brown, you could correct me, uh, is to really designate that house as a historic house because it doesn't have a designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll ask for a motion and a second to approve resolution 2505-CRA.
So moved.
Second.
Very well. Ms. Sittins, please call a roll.
Singer.
Yes.
Drucker.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Nakless.
Yes.
Victor.
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes to zero.
Thank you very much. There are, there is no other business to consider, so we'll turn over to the Director's Report.
No report for the CRA this afternoon.
Uh, no report. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Just a couple questions. You and I had some conversations about some ongoing things. Can you give just a, you know, a very, very brief update as to some of the ongoing projects downtown, like the Alta project, uh, that we discussed the other day? Where, where is that right now?
Staff is working on quick builds at Meisner Boulevard, South Palmetto Park Road, and Palmetto Park Road east of the Intracoastal, which is not directly part of the Alta Downtown Study, but is one of the projects. Those should be forthcoming this fall. Alta and Jeff Speck are planning workshop with staff and with the public in January. We're reviewing the dates right now. Right now, the 14th and 15th, they may be rescheduled. I'm not sure yet about rescheduling, but we're looking at that possibility. So those are two of the projects that are related to downtown in particular that we're considering and are in the works right now.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Um, Mr. Kaler, any report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No report?
Thank you. Commissioners? Mr. Thompson?
No report from me, thank you.
Snakless?
No report, thanks.
Ms. Drucker?
No report.
And Mr. Singer?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Very good. And I have a brief report. Thank you, everyone, for, uh, listening to, uh, everything that's going on here. The Community Redevelopment Agency is an important part of our city. As you know, the CRA was formed in the 1980s. Tax increment financing helps us finance specific improvements, uh, and services to encourage economic development. As we also know, the CRA will terminate in about 16 years, which is around 2042. There was legislation in Tallahassee last year, or this last session, to terminate CRAs early, which would have a significant negative financial consequence to our city, our CRA, and a lot of the infrastructure fund, fund, funding and projects that we do. I cannot say this enough, because there has been rumors that the bill might recirculate again. Once the CRA terminates in about 16 years, the tax increment financing will revert back to the normal property tax rate and the disbursements that are, you see on your trim notice, right? And the city, of course, does not get 100% of the trim bill that you see. We get very, very, you know, we get 25 cents or something like that. But for the TIF, it's about, I, I think it's around 40 cents on the dollar. It's very important to note, right now, during this critical session, during this critical 16 years, we're gonna have to work together and plan what the CRA is going to invest these funds in, in its downtown, or else those funds are lost and reverted back to the county. So the idea is that the TIF is not replacing taxes. It's supposed to be a funding mechanism for our infrastructure projects, our roads, our pipes, our lights, our sidewalks. As you could see in Meisner Park, if any of you have been there, the last couple weeks, there's a lot of stuff going on. They're replacing pavers, they're replacing pipes underneath, they're doing drainage, they're doing, uh, low voltage and fiber optic for security cameras, things like that. They're replacing the, um, the, uh, water fountain, the big, the big pumps in, in the fountain there. There's doing stuff at the, uh, amphitheater. There's always stuff to do, and certainly, there's a lot of stuff to do, uh, in the downtown, uh, that's gonna be continuing right now. Um, this is supposed to increase values to avoid tax increases and fund, and avoid funding gaps. It requires continuous planning, updates, which is what's happening now. These downtown regulations have been modified several times over the years, including today, affecting planning, zoning, downtown improvements, design guidelines, very many, when some issue of importance comes up, the plan has to be amended, as Mr. Zervis and Mr. Brown said, to, uh, to adopt these changes to reflect that the downtown, um, the downtown plan has changed. Obviously, there's still a lot of work that has to happen there, as we've said, you know, ad nauseam. Infrastructure, sidewalks, lights, water, sewer pipes, lift stations, traffic improvements, our parks over there, our community center as well, that, which is in the CRA. We have to maintain them, we have to upkeep them, uh, and they're critical to our economic vibrancy. I don't think anyone debates that. Likewise, there's many city, uh, through the city, uh, the city and the CRA do not control all the roads in our boundaries. This is something that was very new to me, um, coming here, uh, you know, 20 years ago, was that we, we live in the city, but the county controls a specific road, the state controls a specific road, um, you know, the city controls, of course, all the roads that are in green. So sometimes we are seeking funding and improvements, especially on places like Palmetto Park Road, that it's not our road, right? So, uh, commissioners like Ms. Drucker and, you know, Mr. Thompson, his Nakless, and Mr. Singer, we're always advocating at the TPA, at the county level, at the state level, for improvements, uh, to fix the roads that technically, I, I wanna say, don't belong to us, but that are not controlled by us. It's really important that we advocate for those improvements. However, the CRA, as Mr. Camacho talked about, the CRA has some roads within its boundaries, and, uh, we can work together and, and try to fix some of those traffic problems that we all complain about. We're also trying to be a little bit more innovative to reduce traffic, right? We talked about the downtown Boca Connect, right? People should be using it. I see a lot of people using it. I see even kids from FAU using it, because it reaches the tip of Glades there, um, which is great. Leave your cars at home. And now, of course, Guidance will start its auto, automotive, uh, you know, automated project, which is, is going on in a lot of cities already with Waymo and some other vendors, right? So there's opportunities to reduce traffic by innovation, and it's, uh, it's good that in the city and the CRA, we're embracing, we're embracing that. Um, as we're working to improve these downtown regulations, again, as we, as we've done today, we have to improve and update this master plan. Um, things that I talk about a lot are making sure that the holistic downtown plan is created with public input. It should be safe, walkable, bikeable, connected, easy from, easy to get from place to place. That's why a pedestrian bridge or some sort of way to get from, uh, the train tracks across to Meisner Park, or at least from east to west, is really important for safety. Uh, we want to improve traffic downtown, of course, and we do want to continue to embrace open space, recreation, activated parks, the things that people talk about. There's an opportunity for more pocket parks, maybe park dedication. Uh, we can look at open space requirements, which have changed over the years, um, so it could be vibrant and activated with a mixture of uses. Likewise, we could start to embrace parking hubs rather than individual parking approvals when possible. We can reduce parking requirements, like, on places like Palmetto or other active locations. I'm all in favor, Mr. Brown, of, of having Alta look at Palmetto and doing those things, but if they do it in a vacuum or in a silo, without looking holistically at this, we can improve Palmetto, but then restaurants will still not be able to open on Palmetto because of the parking requirements. Uh, the idea is that we can get those parking hubs away from the main thoroughfares, um, we could reduce those requirements, get some businesses to open on Palmetto, uh, restaurants or whatnot, um, and keep the traffic out of the major, uh, major thoroughfares. Obviously, Meisner Park already did this. That's what they did in the 1990s. They moved the parking to the corners, um, to activate the, the center. Um, likewise, what I've seen in many projects over the last couple years is a concern by the public about setbacks, lot lines. Obviously, coming from a place like New York, um, there are no setbacks, right? Every, all the, the buildings are built one upon each other, um, which is normal in many, many, many cities. Um, but in our city, um, having a newer downtown, um, it's still kind of concerning to a lot of people that there's no setbacks in the downtown or no lot lines. And so a lot of developers kind of just do it anyway, uh, and, you know, try to terrace that, or wedding cake, and, and whatnot. And so maybe it's something that we look at too, when we're looking at revamping this plan. It's gonna take some time to do this right. I think that's okay. But the idea is that these plans are supposed to be a guide for the CRA, CRA, and then a future for our quality of life in the city. If the plan's got, if it's going to be successful, it's gotta be connected to the government campus and Brit, Bright Line, but still be independent of it. It's very important for everyone to know that no matter what happens with the downtown, the mission of the CRA must continue. Uh, and all this work that we talk about continuously, that I talk about here with each other, with the CFO, the, the CRA's work for infrastructure will continue no matter what kind of projects are happening downtown. This work has to continue. Obviously, if we could work together and do it cohesively, the city can be so much better, but we've gotta work together on it. We have a lot of transition happening now. We have a new city manager starting, which means we'll have a new executive director starting as well. Eventually, I'm not asking for any consensus right now, but the event, eventually, we will need consensus to start discussing the best path forward for the revamp of the CRA's downtown plan. Likewise, it's 4035, which is the ordinance that does it. We're gonna need to work on that together, um, you know, in the next several months and potentially more than that. But it's something I wanted to get out there, be in front of it, because there's a lot of discussion here, and we keep talking about these siloed things, you know, and we really gotta get back to this kind of big picture and all work together to get there. So, I don't know if there's any thoughts on that. It's not, Ms. Drucker, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. My only thought, and thank you for the presentation, my only thought is with that CRA bill possibly coming back, how much do we wanna hold off? If we could start having the conversations, or do we wanna hold off till the session passes? Because from everything that I, that I'm hearing is the CRA bill's gonna come back in some form. So, we won't know until bills start to be, well, they started already filing bills anyways, but we won't know more till the next few weeks. So maybe we can obviously start giving this some thought, and then the next couple weeks, as committee weeks start to happen, which they start up, I, I think it's the second week of October, uh, then we'll start to see what's coming down from Tallahassee.
I appreciate the comments. I really do. Likewise, it is specifically for that reason that I, I mentioned once again that the that the CRA's obligations are independent of any other projects that are kind of going on in terms of the downtown. It must continue on its mission, and I don't want to say accelerate it, but the point is, to make sure that we know if we can work on this, you know, this better master plan and then budget for the projects that are supposed to be done here. Mr. Pearlman, I hear you loud and clear. It is imperative that we, that we continue our planning and our budgeting so we cannot lose this economic tool that's been given to the city many, many years ago. It's going to require a lot of planning, a lot of budgeting, and those things should absolutely be looked at very, very carefully, but it should be done, and likewise, it must be done. Any other comments?
I was just going to mention that one of the slides that you had, you said that the amended downtown plan at the very top should include public input. And I think it's important that that public input, holistic downtown plan created with public input, starts early.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Again, we've talked about having potentially, you know, I've mentioned in the past that strategic planning, that there should be perhaps, you know, a little section for strategic planning just for downtown. Again, to Ms. Drucker's point, we might need to be a little faster than strategic planning, which is in May. We might need to be a lot faster than that. And certainly, we have, you know, a great team and staff and, you know, that will, that will jump at what's ever necessary to protect our people from, you know, potential, you know, tax increases and make sure that that money stays in Boca where it belongs. So I appreciate, I appreciate the listening to me. There are some, a bunch of events happening. Again, you can go online to the website. You could see all the great things happening in Boca. You can go to downtownboca.org. You can get a copy of all the regulations that the downtown is based upon. You can get any, all the budgetary material, as well, as well as the audited financials. If there's any more, if there's any more comments, please reach out. Reach out to any of us, you know, we're all, we're all there. We're happy to, we're happy to meet with you and listen to you and talk to you about what's going on. So with that being said, without any further business, we are adjourned without objection at 1:57 PM, and we will reconvene shortly. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and welcome to a special meeting of the Boca Raton City Council. It is Monday, September 8th, 2025. The time is 2:04. First item of business is a pledge of allegiance. Will everyone please rise and join in?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Sittens, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Singer?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nakless?
Here.
Councilmember Drucker?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Still here.
Councilmember Waiters? All present.
Thank you. The purpose of this public hearing is to consider Resolution 129-2025, and I'll ask Ms. Sittens to read its title now, please.
Resolution 129-2025. A resolution of the City of Boca Raton equalizing the assessments, levying the same as assessments against benefited properties within the Downtown Special Assessment District, City of Boca Raton, Florida, directing the city clerk to record assessments in the improvement lien book, establishing priority of lien and payment of principal and interest, providing for severability, providing for appeal, or providing an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor Steven Timberlake. Special Projects Manager in the Financial Services Department will make the presentation on Resolution 129-2025.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Before you is the Downtown Special Assessment, the annual adoption of it. The City Council first adopted the Downtown Special Assessment methodology so that certain property owners, owners would pay for certain infrastructure projects that specifically benefit the downtown. The special assessment is required to fund the debt service and administrative costs for those special assessment revenue bonds. The Downtown Special Assessment area overlaps the CRA area. This map here includes all of the projects which have been completed as part of the Downtown Special Assessment. So the purpose of today's meeting is to hear and consider any and all complaints as to the special assessments. A recommendation will be made concerning adjustments and equalization of the special assessment, and the total special assessment amount cannot change, only the per rata share for each parcel. So Resolution 129-2025 equalizes and adopts the special assessment for downtown 26. The 2026 special assessment was calculated with the latest certified tax rule, which is the 2024, from Palm Beach County Property Appraisers Office. The 2026 special assessment rule details the market value, the special benefit and special assessment installed amount due for each property owner before January 1st of 2026. To calculate the payment, we take the total required bond payment divided by the total downtown market value, and that equals our assessment rate. The assessment rate for 2026 is .00100, a reduction of a little over 5.5% from 2025. Our rate decreased again due to an increase in property values, and overall, the property values went up about 6.5% year over year. This graph shows the historical, history of our assessment rate. As you can see, it dropped off drastically in 2022, and one of the bonds was retired. We have one bond left that retires in 2030. The value of the benefited properties continues to grow, passing the $3 billion mark. So what does that mean? That means for an average home of $500,000 in the Downtown Special District, $58 would have been your assessment in '24. '23, it was 53, and this year, it will be at 50. For the sixth year in a row, I believe, we received no objection letters, so we recommend approval of Resolution 129-2025, equalizing and adopting the special assessment for the next fiscal year, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Seeing none, we'll open up the public hearing in this matter. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward now. Last call on Resolution 129-2025, and we have closed the public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion to adopt. Darryl, your motion?
So moved.
I'll give that to Mr. Waiters and the second to Ms. Snakless. Any further discussion on this? Then, Ms. Sittens, will you please call the roll?
Drucker?
Yes.
Nakless?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Waiters?
Yes.
Singer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Five votes to zero.
Thank you. That concludes this special meeting. We are going to adjourn, and we're going to resume in just one moment for our regularly scheduled council workshop. With no further business, this special meeting is adjourned at 2:09. Good afternoon, and welcome to a workshop meeting of the Boca Raton City Council. It is Monday, September 8th, 2025. The time is 2:10. Our first item of business today is a presentation on the activation of Wildflower Park. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Greg Stevens, Stephanie Lucia, and Zach Beer are going to make presentations regarding the activation of Wildflower Park and our infrastructure work under the bridge at Wildflower Silver Palm. We're looking forward to the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Before I dive into the presentation, I just want to take a moment to share that over the past few months, we've started working with an in-house committee on our, on our programming. We have recruited a number of talented and dedicated professionals in the, in the programming field. And one of our, well, our focus is going to be assessing all programs throughout recreation services, determining their viability today, as well as how tuned we are, how in tune we are with trends and community needs. And the first, the first order on our, on our agenda was and is activating the Wildflower Park. Okay, so to help guide us, we established a vision, something that we think is in connection with the public, knowing that health and wellness is a focus today, knowing the needs for more, the need for more fitness classes in light of what we're doing with public art. We set forth, keeping this in mind, that we're, we're trying to, you know, bring a space to residents that focuses on, that focuses on fitness, art, and community experiences. Some of the things we kept as far as consideration as we, as we examine different programs, again, the focus on health and wellness, looking to encourage healthy lifestyles, being cognizant of the location of Wildflower in relation to, to the downtown, in relation to Meisner Amphitheater, supporting local business, again, listening to the community and getting a really good sense of what they're looking for, and being flexible, so trying to meet different needs for, you know, for our residents. When we program, we typically have classifications of how we do so. So we have everything from passive programs, which we can, which we usually call Set 'Em and Forget 'Em programs. Then obviously, we have vendors, staff-led, and volunteer opportunities, so looking how to utilize our resources in conjunction with these different types of program considerations. Examples of passive programs that we are looking into. I believe you are all aware of the public art that is happening in the downtown, I'm sorry, at the Wildflower property, including the swings, the mural, and the asphalt art at the splash pad. Our focus is to continue to create a space at Wildflower that people want to come and spend time with their families, loved ones. We're considering pavilion reservations, so during those times where maybe programming isn't viable, opening up the space for people to come in and to book the pavilion for, for parties, for private gatherings, and, you know, take advantage of the splash pad and, and the scenery out at, at the park. And then something that's pretty common today in a lot of passive, passive parks are games. And we'll assess, as we, as we continue to move forward with the programs and see what works and what doesn't work, we'll see what kind of supplementary games and activities we can, we can have there that can just stay throughout, you know, throughout the, the opening of the park. So with regard to vendor-led programs, a lot of talk about food trucks. Food trucks are a fairly easy thing to bring in. It can stand alone, but even looking at it as something that can accompany fitness programs, if we know we have, you know, yoga, Tai Chi, a boot camp happening Monday, Wednesday, Sunday mornings, can also have, you know, someone out there selling smoothies, selling, you know, juices, coffee, being cognizant of the area with the water, the noise, residents, so looking at kind of lower-key events with acoustic musical, musical instruments. And again, these things don't have to be independent of each other. Staff-led programming, some things that we're looking at to start sooner than later. We've, we've termed one of the programs Monthly Recreation Field Days. I will come up with something nicer. But for, just to kind of explain with what that is, looking at having different sections from the department come out on a monthly basis and kind of advertise what we do, and also offer programming. It could be gumbo limbo, doing something regarding nature. It could be the library with storytimes. It could be athletics, doing a particular sport, across the board in the department, public art. But it gives us an opportunity to bring some, some either free or affordable, very affordable programming to the public, and also continue to promote what we do in recreation. And pop-up events is another thing where we, we would take advantage of what's already happening in the area. So if we know there's a busy Friday night, we can just, we can come out there with, whether it's a musical act, or, or some food, or a craft, but with, whether it's a musical act, or some food, or a craft, but kind of leaning into what's already happening down there and supplementing it with some additional recreation programming. And we continue to look for ways to work with volunteers in the community as well. So, we've talked about the possibility of a garden. We thought a butterfly garden may work. We have it at some of our other parks. Volunteers do maintain them, so it's something we thought maybe we could continue here. And then also, potentially adding some clubs. We have a lot of people in our town that want to walk, they want to run. Wildflower could be a potential hub where those clubs can kind of work out of and gather, and again, promoting health and wellness throughout our programming. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stevens.
So, looking at the Wildflower, now, it's not just about activating the park now, but looking at what we can do into the future that can both increase the participation and the activities on-site. A couple of things we're looking at here, the existing playground equipment there, it's nice, it's artsy, but it misses a lot of elements that we have in our other playgrounds that bring kids back repetitively, back for more visits, and maybe there's a way of taking the existing equipment and tying that into a playground, or replacing it with a new playground that would have more amenities, that would draw more participation back into the park. Shade coverings are something that we often hear that the park is lacking. It's something that we hear across our park system, and it's something that we've incorporated going into the future to start looking at all the new playgrounds that we built have shade incorporated into them. We're looking at our sports courts and things like that into the future for making sure that there's shade. Obviously, the temperatures and the sun's intensity continues to increase, so we feel that's important. Lastly, metered parking, well, it's something that we can look at the site that during the activities we pre-program or the events that we have, we could have free parking. The site itself is becoming a little bit more of an issue while we're dealing with having un-metered parking and having open access there. I'll explain more to that in a second. So, when we talk about limited parking at the park, we're going through a couple of different things that we're facing there. One, there's been an increase in commercial activity through Silver Palm and the adjacent park, where we've got charters and some other activities where people are parking in the park throughout the day, leaving their cars and going off-site. The park itself gets used a lot at Wildflower and/or Silver Palm for people going to the beach. They'll park their car there, leave their car there for multiple hours, taking up parking spaces. So, in putting in metered parking, I think it was initially intended for both Silver Palm and/or Wildflower initially, we would look at that to possibly have a way of turning the park over more frequently and to prevent some of the other abuses that we currently have going on there. Just throwing out quickly that we have basically, the Wildflower itself has 50 total parking spaces, four of which are handicapped and whatnot, so basically, 46 parking spaces there, and there's 12 standard parking spaces at Silver Palm, which is adjacent. So, again, between the two, we're looking at 58 total parking spaces, so we do have limited parking there. We do also recognize we have to be good neighbors. We have neighbors in close proximity to the park, to the north. Our neighbors across the waterway, both Light and Sound carry across the water, and we understand that there could be the potential for a project being built to the west of the park also that would have some residential in there. So, we want to make sure that we're being good neighbors to those around us. And again, as we talked about the lack of shade, we do have trees and whatnot there that as they mature and over time, they will generate more shade, but there's the thought that we need to put up some shade covers over some other parts of the parks, and benches or whatnot, or even over the play elements to cool them off.
Okay, so, some of the goals and guiding principles that we are adhering to, we want to focus on consistency. We want people to understand what they can expect at the park first, so we'll work with vendors and get those programs out there so people know that every Wednesday, I can go to this, every Sunday, I can go to this, every Friday night, I'll see this. And then balancing, balancing things that are vendor-led, things that are scheduled versus things that are drop-in, and just being able to use the park casually, so balancing the different activities. We obviously want everything to be accessible. We want something for parents that are coming with kids with strollers to be able to enjoy the park. We want people to be able, of all ages, to have programming there that will be available to them. And then, once again, just regarding the downtown synergy, being cognizant of what we're doing with Sanborn Square and Meisner, making sure that each of these locations, they're working together and not in competition with each other, but each offering something special and unique to their location and where they can serve the community better based on the offerings that the facility has. And then, we're going to pilot programs, and we're going to grow them if they're successful, and if not, we're going to be flexible and make changes as needed. So, here's a timeline for activation for right now. I mean, we'll continue to develop this as we move forward with the activation, but we're obviously going to continue to do some assessing, making sure that we're in tune with what we believe the community wants based on our conversations with park users and, of course, people that come and visit our facility. So, we need to recruit vendors. We have the art installation that will be happening in the fall, and we're going to start some obvious programs that we think we can hit the ground running with. Then, in the spring, well, winter-spring, we'll look at how things are doing, and then, okay, where do we go from here? Is this a good time to start with pavilion reservations? We've established some routine programs. Certain things are successful now. How does that fit in? And what are the next steps? And then, again, we'll start to look at getting volunteers involved, expanding program options, and it's just going to be a constant thing of assessing and developing based on the success of vendors, based on the feedback we get from the community, and yeah, the response, the response we get from those using the park. Here's a sample calendar, something that we think we can achieve by 2026. You'll see something every day. I mean, there are opportunities, obviously, for more food truck activity here, but the idea is at least by 2026, we start to have something happening every day. Hopefully, we'll be able to do more, and hopefully, we'll have vendors that will be successful and want to continue to add programming, but as early as a few months, we can start to fill up a calendar and have the park activated. And then, last but definitely not least, marketing. It's really about creating a brand for Wildflower and letting people know what it's capable of and what there is to offer there. So, promoting the walkability for those that live there in Boca Connect, having a webpage and good signage that promote the offerings, and really making a concerted effort to get the word out so people don't have to look far to find out what's available to them. And that concludes our part of the presentation.
Councilmembers, any questions? Ms. Drucker?
Thank you so much. I've been asking for Wildflower activation for a good amount of time, probably like the last year, actually, over a year, and I think I brought this up recently again with some of my visits down south, and some of the parks have been activated. I appreciate the effort. I appreciate all the programming that's going in here. People are not going to visit a park if there's nothing for them to eat or drink. If it's only a food truck here and there, it's not going to work because it's really, really warm. The reason that the Wildflower has less parking, because some of us were already on the council when this project was approved, was because we wanted to be an interactive park with the community, because this park was kept there because of referendum, because of people in that area wanted this to be preserved as public land. And we listened, and we did this incredible park that was on hold during COVID, and then we came back. So, I understand the noise factors, but the people that are saying about the noise, they wanted this park to be there, and the way that this park was created and the why we did it this way was to have it interactive, people walk from the downtown. Maybe you take the Boca Connect because now it goes over the bridge, or right now, it goes into the ocean, I mean, to the barrier island. So, again, I had brought an idea that I thought was a good idea, then I went to another area outside of Florida, and I saw another idea, and there has to be a place, a sense of why do we want to go to this park? And if we're the ones that are out here, kind of in the West, like whenever I go to like Sugar Sand, which I think we were there this weekend, like there has to be a purpose for us to go to these parks. There needs to be more than just a food truck, which, by the way, food trucks are not, those are like so behind. Again, here we are, what I brought the idea back, the first example that I gave you guys was a vendor, it's in Miami, it's in Coconut Grove, it's in a small park, and they have food there, that you could get a drink anytime you go to this park. You can go and get a drink. If I go there and I want to work at the Wildflower, I've done that, I'll take my iPad, I want to sit there at that. I forgot my water, there's nothing for me to drink except the water fountain, there's nothing for me to buy if I get hungry. If you have children, the same thing. So, I don't, that was one of the ideas. And the second one that I brought was like local pop-up restaurants that would come, or just do small installations. So, again, when you're talking about activating a park, that is not, the programming is great, but you have to have more than just the programming for those parks. That's just my opinion, and for someone that visits throughout not only the state, but throughout the county, just different places, it's like, why do I want to go there? Why do I want to go to this restaurant? Why do I want to go to Meisner Park? Why do I want to go to wherever it is that I go to? There's nothing to do. Like, if you go to Wildflower, there's really nothing to do. So, you do your yoga class, and then what do you do next?
I think those are good points. I think what our intention is, is to kind of understand as we ease into this, how the parking and how it will work itself out. I know we want people to use Boca Connect, I know we want people to walk, I know we want people to Uber, Lyft, whatever we want, we want, we want to focus on walkability, but with only 46 parking spaces, it will not take much for anything we do, parking will be gone. I mean, even a small concert, so...
That's a good problem to have.
100%, but we have to have a solution to it.
We can park at Meisner Park and have shuttles to the venue. We have to think outside the box.
I mean, those are very good points, yes.
This ease, we've been easing into this for about 12 months. So, I think that we just need to make bold decisions, just do something fun at the park, get people out there with their families, get college students, families, adults, whatever the programming is, and I mean, I guess Nike's going away from just do it to you can, they have like a new slogan. We just got to do stuff. We just got to keep moving and not keep forming committees and having input. The input is there. People want a park that is not, every time I see someone that talks to me about the park, the first thing that they say is, "It's a ground for homeless and unhoused." This beautiful park, that's what it's become. So, we need to be more proactive, we need to get bolder, and we need to move faster so that people could enjoy a park that cost us, Mr. Brown, about what, $25 million?
More or less.
More or less. So, as much as I appreciate all the efforts, I think it's time for us to start moving and start doing good programming to activate the park. Thank you.
Thank you for your feedback. I appreciate it.
Councilmembers, further comments? Ms. Knackless?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work. I just had a question, since you brought it up, about metered parking. And I noticed on Slide 10, and I'm there all the time, I'm just not there usually for three hours, but there is a three-hour time limit currently. Is that being enforced? Do you have issues with that three-hour time limit? It sounds like there are some issues with some people. That parking lot is never full when I've been there, other than staff events or city events that we've had for ribbon cuttings. It's usually pretty empty, but is that three-hour time limit currently being enforced? And while you're considering metered parking is one option, would other options be to maybe add Wildflower to the beach permit, or add, have a special designation for resident parking, some kind of thing that, because it's supposed to be easy. Nobody wants to go to the park and have difficulties added on to them. You just want to go to the park, park, let your kids play and have fun. So, adding that extra metered parking step might be a deterrent rather than a more welcoming thing, but I understand. We put metered parking in because we don't want people parking there all day that shouldn't be parking there all day, who aren't there enjoying the park for the park's reasons. So, just while you're looking at metered parking, please offer us some other alternatives as well.
Mr. Thompson?
I was just going to say, I appreciate you all looking into this, coming up with great ideas, I feel are great ideas for activating this, and it is, it's kind of this weird spot where most of the time that I've spent there, it has been relatively quiet, and most of the spaces are not used, but I have seen at the same time, a lot of people using it for the beach access that you've described. And for what it's worth, you know, and I appreciate the emphasis on fitness and making this even more available in an obvious way to folks who want to emphasize fitness. As I was passing by this park just this weekend, I saw what looked to be like a run club starting up like their day there. It wasn't like the massive run clubs that we've seen, which are hundreds of people at times, it was a couple of dozen, but all of that is happening even without our activating it. So, I think with a little bit more critical mass provided by us in terms of activation, I think it'll pay dividends. So, thank you again for your hard work on this.
No, it's our pleasure. Our pleasure.
And just quickly, Mr. Thompson, you know, that's something that's important to understand too, as you're saying, like fitness. When we're looking at activating and activities too, it's weekdays throughout the week, it's evenings, it's weekends, and that's what we're trying to look at as a broad base of activities and whatnot to activate the park, not just in the evenings or whatnot, but throughout the day, throughout the weekends, into the evenings, so that we constantly have something going on there to reduce some of the other issues that we've been having.
All right, Mr. Wiger?
Thank you. Thanks very much for really looking at this. One of the things I recall, what's happening under the bridge? We're doing some lights under there? Is there any activation? Is that part of this program, or is this totally separate?
That's why Mr. Beer's here. After we finish the discussion on the park, Mr. Beer can talk about what's happening under the bridge.
My mind reading, yes. All right, we'll wait for Mr. Beer, then we'll go back just to this. With respect to the playground, thank you so much for looking into that. I go here often, especially on the weekends, just to walk around and see what's happening and talk to the rangers and the park rangers and see all the different people using it. There's a couple of observations that some of them have given me. Obviously, one of them, yes, the playground adjacent to the splash pad is always interesting, right, because you have wet kids climbing all over the place, so as we know, that could lead to potential injuries if there's a large climbing structure adjacent to it, but I'm sure everyone will look at that. But needless to say, one of the things that we did when Beach and Parks District rebuilt Pat Reeves Park's park over there, playground over there, making it accessible, which I thought was wonderful, and what they did there was just really incredible. So, if that is being looked at here, certainly, I would appreciate if it could be looked at to make sure that it's accessible. Likewise, yes, we've noticed that sometimes there is a transient population that comes here because the tables are fixed, it's a shelter with no activation, so sometimes it might be also that the, you know, a food truck parking, taking up parking spaces, again, will take up further spaces which are very necessary, but maybe we can get some vendor activation underneath the pavilion itself potentially, whether it's a rolling cart or something like that, so they could use the chairs that are bolted into the ground and really should be reserved for people eating. The larger question, as all the other commissioners have stated, is, you know, this isn't an odd place in a certain respect, it's a great, great location, it's one of the best lots in the entire city, but it's kind of siloed in there because you have to drive around there, and it's just at the junction of the bridge. In fact, as everyone knows, the Second Street bypass is just off the entrance to this. So, when we talk about parking, I still, you know, as a biker, as a runner, I wish we didn't have to think that everyone has to be relying on just the cars, because Second Street being so close with a dedicated bike lane, the bypass that takes you all the way to the downtown campus is a great way to get here, is the right way to get here for those that can do so, and it would be great to activate it with some more bike things. Sometimes we see, like the bike pump, you know, they have like a bike pump and like a little allen wrench kit or something like that, bolted in with an air hose tire at multiple places throughout the city. Maybe this is a good place for that, to encourage more bike riding. Again, some people are adjusting their seat, need some air in the tires, something, you know, so putting just those little things here might obviously, you know, again, it's one of those things, we're not encouraging dog walking here, we're not encouraging all those things here, you know, perhaps we shouldn't, people do it anyway. You know, making sure that there's bags for picking up is super important here, but maybe, having the water fountain, have a doggy bowl fill up, you know, something basic, you know. So, there's more opportunities here, but one of the things, again, when we look at a siloed park, that is concerning to me, we talk about food. If Palmetto had more kind of community retail or daily food activities, there are some in that 200 Chambers Building or that 200 Palmetto Place Building, there's some, but people could then buy their food and bring it to the park. There's some community retail on the east side of the bridge, there's a pizza store and some of those other things, but on the west side, you have a lot of large restaurants, and we don't have that community retail there. So, again, if we look holistically at replanning Palmetto, it could help activate this park if there's some more community retail on Palmetto, which we have to do by looking at parking hubs. So, again, we do need to activate this. I'm so thankful that you're really, really looking into this, but let's not forget the big picture. big picture, which can help activate it as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll just echo what my colleague said, first in our thanks. When we envisioned this back even in 2016, there was discussion about more activation, evening events, that it would be a place where people who worked in the area would want to go during the day and after work. So I would encourage you to expedite whatever you can in terms of the whole panoply of events. I think that, see what happens, and let's just start getting some events there, and we'll tweak as we go, but the sooner the better. And appreciate the other things that you've provided an update on.
Thank you very much. That's the plan. We will move forward.
All right, thank you. And then, before Mr. Beer begins, would you like to have a seat? You've been standing there all this time. And I think if we're done with this side, you could stand over there if you have a seat if you like.
Sure.
All right, great. Thank you. And I should have said that, I didn't realize we'd gone for so long and you'd been standing there. We could have invited you to have a seat earlier. But thank you, Mr. Beer.
That's right. Gaffey and Mayor and City Council, Zach Beer, your Public Works Engineering Director. And hopefully, at the tail end of this presentation, I've been asked to provide a brief update on some of the infrastructure activities that are happening in the underpass. And a quick history for those that are just seeing that presentation today. The original City Council directive was to generate a more pleasant experience between Wildflower and Silver Palm. That included some activation and a connection between the two parks. And after negotiations with Palm Beach County, it was identified that they had a slightly different view of what that space should be. And so for the last several years, staff supported by council and the city manager's office has been continuing those negotiations, getting to, I don't think the idealized version, but certainly a significantly improved version from what's down there now. So what does the underpass scope include as of this year? It includes painting the bridge with Palm Beach County's very specific master builders' master product HB400 DOT Fine Texture Serenity White, that we had to paint for them and get approved onsite with every bucket of paint. That is currently being painted, which includes the western, or the eastern mechanical building and some of those other areas that could certainly use a little bit of dressing up. And then also installing a decorative fence. So the Palm Beach County has identified their areas used for road and bridge for, especially the southern part of the county, to be able to go in and do maintenance if anything were to happen. Of course, our basket bridges are incredibly important for moving transportation. So this provides both an upgrade in the aesthetic and also provides the opportunity for Palm Beach County staff to be able to secure their facilities during an incident. And within the fence border, staff just finished installing color-changing uplighting. So we have done some testing of that, which I'll show you in a picture. But that will be activated after the fence goes in with kind of a behind-the-fence uplight and a glow on the fence and an uplight on the bridge. And then the last portion, which was, I would say, the tallest order, and really appreciate this ongoing support to get there, which is installing four murals on the faces of the columns facing the walkway that you see before you. So just some pictures of what's happening. We have our contractor outpainting. You see this, right now, you see one of the colors that's being shown. That's not, I need to emphasize, that is not the specific color that is going to be under the bridge. It was going through all of the sequences to test the LEDs to make sure we could qualify and accept that product from the vendor. And then you'll see the other portion that's continuing to be painted. And just wanted to show you a really quick layout that's a little bit small, but essentially the western portion, that is the maintenance area for Palm Beach County, is going to be fenced in with a pretty substantial gate space for them to be able to do their maintenance activities. And then the existing chain-link fence on the east side is going to get an upgrade with those decorative panels. And you're seeing up on the screen the actual metal that's going into the fabricating plant. These will be, not entirely, but one-of-a-kind decorative fences for this area, and they do incorporate a flower pattern to really tie into the park. And then just a really quick general rendering, also noting these are not the exact murals that are going to go in. But in order to get a permit with Palm Beach County, staff developed some elevations to identify specifically where the fence, the gates, and the mural was going to be located to be able to be able to move forward with the project. And then as far as timeline, staff is anticipating that all of these elements are likely to be concluded at the end of October, not pending any other challenges with either inclement weather or Palm Beach County. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council members, any questions? Ms. Drucker?
Thank you, Mr. Beer. Thank you. So we started this park in 2022, and this is a perfect example, Mr. Wigder brought up, how the roads are sometimes owned by the county, state, or federal roads. This project has taken almost three years to just get this lighting for this underpass. So thank you to you and to your staff for working hard. The county, if you're listening, for finally allowing us to do some of the enhancements that we wanted to do to continue activating this park also in the evening and to connect both sections. I know it's been a really long time coming, since we started this in 2022. Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Mr. Brown?
Just briefly acknowledge the assistance of Commissioner Woodward, working with county staff, as well as the county staff themselves working with our staff. This is something different for Palm Beach County, which is probably why it took so long.
Absolutely. And I will thank staff because I've had a number of conversations for more than a year probably with Commissioner Woodward, and also when she was, that's how long it is, when she was county mayor, Mayor Sacks, about pointing out some blocks in the process. I mention this to indicate that the mayor and council can be helpful advocates for all things when we deal with other levels of government. And I'm seeing staff, more than we used to, use, better inform us and help us with some diplomatic efforts at all levels of government. So I would say that helps move things along, and I would encourage staff to continue to think of us as a resource to communicate concerns on behalf of our constituents. All right. There's nothing further on this side, and then we'll move on to the next one. Thank you, Mr. Beer. And so now we'll proceed to board interviews. The first board for which you're seeking applicants is the Pedestrian and Bikeway Advisory Board. Anyone present here for that? Then Community Advisory Panel. And Community Appearance Board. Oh, and then, yes, and then Sustainability Advisory Board. All right, well, we will make the appointments tomorrow night, so we're going to guess we're going to see some applicants there. I'll open the floor to public requests. This is for general public requests. Agenda matter will be on our Government Campus Partnership of Opportunity, and we'll have public request, public comment there, too. So if you'd like to speak on that, you may want to wait until the upcoming presentation. Otherwise, the floor is open to public requests, although I do have a first card first for Mr. Gary Lanell. I don't think your microphone's on, though, please. Could you check that the mic? Hit the button and make sure it's got a green light there, please.
There we go. Gary Lanell, 21813 Mountain Sugar Lane. Thank you for the opportunity. This is a topic, but it was the first opportunity I had to speak on this. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, and also I'm an executive director of a local nonprofit and various gardeners at the Susan Welchel Community Garden. A lot of us found out from the meeting on the 26th that there was a plan in the works as a result of the community campus project to potentially relocate this garden. And that was devastating news for us, and certainly we weren't aware of that. But it sounded like the city was already having communication with a new nonprofit that's coming to manage the garden, and that that nonprofit was on board with that. So just to backtrack that, I think it's really important that the actual gardeners in the garden are aware of these things and have a say in it. Because we certainly don't want to see the garden moved, and we certainly weren't on board with moving it. So my nonprofit, I'm an executive director of the nonprofit that has spent three years in that garden, thousands and thousands of dollars in that garden. If you've been in that garden, on the west side, you'll see a food forest, about 3,000 square feet, and that's from our nonprofit. And if you walk the southern perimeter, you'll see native vines, native pollinator habitat throughout the garden, again, from the nonprofit and gardeners. And this is something that's not very easy to replace. As a matter of fact, it's not replaceable. We've built up very, very healthy soil for, since its beginning, and that's not something you just replace. So we have a strong educational component in that location. We've got the school across the way. And it's just, it's something that, for two sand volleyball courts, is what I'm seeing, are slated to go there. Please consider putting the sand volleyball courts elsewhere and keeping the garden where it is. Great synergy if you do wind up moving the children's museum to that location. Perfect to be there with the garden, with, you know, next door to it. And finally, the way this happened, if the gardeners in the garden are not aware that the nonprofit that's suddenly running it has these plans, that's a problem. We weren't even aware of the new nonprofit. And for there to be an existing nonprofit operating in the space, spending thousands of dollars to not be aware and not even be asked to be involved in this decision, that's a problem. So just requesting transparency moving forward, please don't relocate the garden, and happy to speak with anybody at the city level about continuing to manage the garden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanell. Mr. Lanell, before you go, I understand, saw your email last week, and I understand you had a meeting with city staff the end of the week, or the end of last week?
Yes, actually, Mr. Lekesic, Andy, came out immediately upon the email I sent. And then this morning, we had a meeting with Tina Jennings from Sustainability. Everybody from the city's been fantastic. And that's what we want, is we just want to be involved in the conversations. We feel, the gardeners, we feel like we were left out.
Appreciate that. Thank you. All right, this is public request.
John Pearlman, 498 Northeast A Street. I mean, that's really shocking to hear, honestly, that they had no idea of the proposed plan to remove this garden. That's, the nonprofit, I guess, knew, but they didn't... It reminds me of a very troubling closure of a nonprofit that has been around for 40 years in the Gumbo Limbo Center, that suddenly supposedly ran out of funding, which was very alarming to hear. But we're looking into that, and we're researching that. So the truth on Gumbo Limbo is going to come out soon. Regarding the Wildflower Park, the major obstacle that's preventing the activation of that park is the empty lot at the corner of Palmetto Park Road and Northeast Fifth Avenue. That's not in the, that the city does not own. It's preventing accessibility to the park. That's a key corner of foot traffic, car traffic, and people should be able to enter the park from that corner. The city doesn't own that lot right now, obviously. It's, right now, it's like just, it's a, you've invested millions, years into the investment of this park. I mean, has the city tried to get that plot of land? Right now, it's just, it's a, it's a plot of weeds growing right in front of this beautiful park that the city's invested so much into. So we know that in purchasing this new government, this new government building on Yamato, we know from industry professionals that the price tag paid on that property was millions beyond fair market value. We know that there was no discreet search to, it was done through CBRE, who was representing both sides of the transaction. We know it wasn't, it wasn't a deal done at market value, and the city paid millions beyond what its true value is. I think we need to look into making an offer, the city, to this, to this property in front of Wildflower Park at the corner of Palmetto Park Road and Northeast Fifth Avenue. If the city was willing to pay millions beyond the fair market value for the office on Yamato, maybe we need to pay a little bit of a premium to get that plot of land so we can have full access on that major, on that major corner of our city, so that citizens can walk right in and enjoy the beautiful Wildflower Park that we've invested in. Lastly, I'd like to talk about, you know, when you gave the presentation, you were sharing shade structures that you were going to bring to Wildflower. Those are expensive. Right now, and I live near Wildflower, and I also live near Lake Wyman Park, there's a plan for Lake Wyman Park to move an amazing shaded playground that's to the left of the entrance, and it's, it's right under beautiful shade trees. You have a plan to demolish that playground and to build a new, invest millions into a new playground right in the middle of the sun by the bathrooms. You need to abort that plan. It's a horrendous plan. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public request? Last call on public request. Mr. Brown, I'll respond to some of that, but can you confer, I don't believe, can you respond to both the incorrect statements about the fair market value on our pending contract purchase and also the plans at Lake Wyman?
I am not up to speed on the plan for Lake Wyman. I'd have to look further into that as far as the details go. I think Greg has probably moved on from the meeting. As far as the fair market value for the 6551 building, we believe that the purchase was made properly and is an appropriate amount. I would also point out that we have in the past sought to purchase the vacant property at the corner of Fifth Avenue and Palmetto Park Road that's owned by the Haddad family, and we have been unsuccessful in finding a reasonable price for that property.
Yeah, and I was just going to add on that. I know that that discussion happened long before the last speaker moved to Boca Raton, but that had been ongoing for several years. The price was quite high. We typically don't comment on parcels of individual, our individual acquisition targets, although the city generally explores opportunities. Mr. Brown talked about the history there. The city is constrained in terms of, it is not, it is not our practice to go pay over market value for things. Nevertheless, we did engage on that site. But again, that was before the speaker had moved to town, and I think after even. All right, that concludes public request. We'll turn to review of... I'm sorry, oh, Ms. Morrow. Do you want to speak on public? We're going to talk about the downtown campus momentarily.
Okay.
That's what I thought you were up for.
More the campus, but I'd better speak now.
Please.
Because I do have a couple of things that are not about the campus. My name is Judy Morrow, 1305 Northeast Fifth Avenue. I live very close to Wildflower. I live very close to the post office that's on Second Street. You talk about walkability, ride your bicycle. I walk, I ride my bike to the post office. They said, there's a lot of people around the post office that use that post office. It's so busy. The lines are so long. I try to time my visit so that I'm not in a long line. And most of the residents are super upset about having to pay parking while you go to the post office, trust me. But I ride my bike or walk. But if you close that post office on Second Street, right downtown, right across, diagonal from Meisner, people are going to have to get in their cars and go far to a post office. So I just want you to know that there's a lot of people that care about that post office. We love that post office. We use that post office. I go by that post office a lot. It has high traffic. It has high traffic inside. The other thing that I want to talk about is Wildflower. Wildflower, they're right. There used to be that little bit of opening, used to be a restaurant, because we used to go there a long time ago. And on the other side of Wildflower, there's a long rectangle lot. So, you know, if you wanted to make that park bigger, I would definitely try to, you know, acquire that or at least get a price for it, because Wildflower is very, very nice. I was just there last night, and what do you call it? There was a giant boat that we had to keep watching because we didn't think, you know, it was so big. If the bridge doesn't open, it's not going to be able to turn around. So it's very interesting to be, to go to Wildflower as a passive park and to sit there and watch the giant boats, the little boats, the wave runners, the jet skis, the, we used to have manatees, but there's too much pollution, I guess. We don't see manatees anymore at the Wildflower or the Silver Boat Ramp Park. But we love our parks, and as far as Wildflower, the Greater Beach Department, they do an excellent, excellent job with recreation. At Wildflower, all you have to do is just get one DJ, one DJ. If you wanted to be more elaborate, get a two-man band and woman-man band. But for three hours every Friday night, you have one hour of a playlist, 60s to 70s... one hour of a playlist, 60s to 70s music. You have one hour of music, the 80s and the 90s, that a lot of young people like now, too. And then you have one hour of everything, 2000 and beyond, all the rap and electronic.
Ms. Morrow, these are good ideas, but your time is running out, so could you please conclude?
Yes, I'm concluding. Okay, thank you, but I want to talk about the government next.
Yes. Mr. Ungin?
Jonathan Ungin, 6501 Congress Avenue. So, I had to follow up John and the mayor's comments. I'm glad you, glad I got a chance to hear that first. So, but talking about the fair market value, I'm not going to say it was millions off, but what I find to be concerning, I brought it up to you, Mr. Mayor, previously and privately, as well as to the deputy city manager, is state statute 166 dot 045. And that is for the building that you purchased next door. You don't like to pay fair market, over fair market value, which I agree and think that's a very smart thing. However, you did use the confidentiality, the confidentiality exemption for that purchase to not have it be public, all of the rates of other buildings and things like that, that you were looking to purchase, to make sure that it was all fully transparent. And when that happens, it is critical and it is key to get an appraisal. Not a very expensive thing to do, but certainly allows you to understand what that property is worth. And that didn't happen. And I find that to be irresponsible and unreasonable on behalf of the city, but more importantly, that wonderful, wonderful consultant that you all hired. Because I got to imagine that's why you hire a consultant, is to lead you in the right way. But when that consultant is conflicted, when they're representing both sides, maybe you, you know, end up in a situation such as this. So, I'm going to save the rest I have to say about this conflict of interest and this wonderful consultant, because I think it's going to get even more elaborate tomorrow night. So, like I said, I, I, I think this city didn't do any service to this community hiring CBRE, who lacks ethics in a lot of things that they do, as they certainly don't represent the people who hire them. As I've learned from experience and elaborated many times up here, that they certainly don't do any service to the people they represent. They do a service to their own pockets. Thank you.
Anyone else with public request? All right, I think we can nip in some, nip some information in the bud. Mr. Kahler, you were, just, could you speak to what we did concerning that section of Florida statutes, please?
Sure. There's a state law that says if someone makes a public records request and the city wants to claim an exemption of confidentiality, there's an appraisal requirement under state law, the law that Mr. Ungin cited. My understanding is that the city did not receive that request or assert that exemption. Mr. Lukasik could speak more on the negotiation process, but I was asked about that statute and opined on it. My understanding is staff has complied with it.
Yeah, just quickly, quickly, Mayor and Council. So, as we are going through that evaluation process, our CBRE consultant, as a for instance, before you made a determination, shared with you the data that we received from all of the other owners of buildings that we were considering at that time. So, that data was made available to you in public before you ultimately made a decision. So, we, we didn't promote it ahead of time before you made a determination that information was provided to you.
But there's been no assertion under the statute referenced?
No, staff has not made that assertion under the statute.
All right, thank you. One other note, Ms. Morrow, just to go back, because there's been discussion about the post office. In 2018, the last time that was rumored to have left the city, because the private owner and the U.S. Postal Service were still negotiating a lease extension. The U.S. Postal Service was not very interested in continuing it at that site. This city council, with help from our state and our federal delegation, lobbied hard about the importance of a downtown post office. I personally spoke then, right when I became mayor, with senior postal service representatives, and ultimately, the private landowner was able to work out a negotiation and continue to lease that space there. So, I think we all appreciate the value of a postal service in our downtown. And also, we do have a limited free parking at that, in that area, so that patrons can go in quickly and attend to their postal needs. All right, that concludes public requests. We'll now turn to review of regular agenda items. Council members, any questions concerning tomorrow night's agenda or anything you want to raise now?
No questions from me.
Ms. Nicholas?
None.
And Mr. Briger?
My understanding from Mr. Brown is that certain things that were originally on the agenda have been pulled regarding, I think it was Dixie Manor Phase Two, and just wanted confirmation on the record.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, we have received a request from the applicant for the Martin Manor, which is the items 11A, 1 and 2, when tomorrow night's agenda be postponed. It will be our recommendation at tomorrow's meeting that that matter be postponed to a date no later than November 4th, 2025.
Could you just, I was not as familiar with the request. Could you elaborate on that, please?
The applicant requested a postponement without a date. We don't feel that it should be postponed indefinitely, so that the matter remains fresh. And the reason that they gave was that they had just recently received an email from the DISC group requesting further dialogue regarding the historic structure that's going to be maintained on the property as part of Phase Two.
Okay, all right. Any other questions concerning tomorrow night's agenda? All right, I have none either. So, we'll now turn to future agenda matters, and we have items of public concern. And we'll, again, talk for, as we have, our government campus redevelopment opportunity. I'll first turn to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lukasik's going to invite up our partners from Tara Frisbee to discuss additional steps related to the project.
And gentlemen, if you want.
Have a seat.
Yes. If you want, you want to, be comfortable, yes. Feel, no, feel free to have, have a seat, like you did the last time, I thought.
Mr. Martin, the floor is yours.
Oops. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for your time. I'm here on behalf of Boca City Center and here with my partner, Rob Frisbee. Mayor, members of council, city manager, staff, and members of the community, we're excited about today to share important updates and revisions for our planned redevelopment of the government campus and enhancement of the Memorial Park. Thank you for allowing us to present and update the council and the community. In February, this council voted to move forward with our team to be your partner in this public-private partnership. We were up against much larger proposals, and we're inspired and excited to continue to refine our proposal with the community. Before and after we were selected, we spent time with the community, walking the fields, playgrounds, and the downtown, and observing the recreational areas to get a sense of what was happening. They were underutilized and outdated. The goal of this project is to revitalize and revamp the amenities for the future of this community, not to keep the status quo. Some people want to keep the skate park in its current location, but the skating community is excited about the new location and a modern facility. And that's why community input is so important, and we remain an important part of this project. To date, we've had over 30 public meetings and open houses, and we're planning more. There's been significant amount of community interest and passion expressed by residents, and it's clearly demonstrated. We welcome this involvement. We are listening to the varied voices. It continues to inspire us to make this idea better. We're here today to show you that we've been listening, and we hope that many of you here and watching online are open to hearing what we have to share. Our team has been working in earnest to update the plan in response to the feedback we've received. This continues to be an iterative and evolving process. In a moment, we will go over a brief presentation, but allow me to present some major updates. Enhancing, first, enhancing what we hope will be Memorial Park and commemorating that park with a dedicated monument as the center of downtown. After decades, it should finally have that. We couldn't agree more, and we're committed to working with the city and the veterans groups on this. Number two, keeping the six banyan trees in their original location and locating the children's playground adjacent to them to highlight their importance. It's the right thing to do. Adding, third, adding and improving recreational facilities to the downtown as a result of the private sector investment. Recreation amenities will be improved in other parts of the city closer to where certain residents live. Four, adding more green space in this area. Five, enhancing the tennis courts in downtown. And six, building a new world-class community center in City Hall with technology and welcoming design and a planned approach that is missing from what is there today. And lastly, reductions in intensity to the evolving plan, including reductions in the amount of commercial units and reductions in the, in the number of residential units. With these changes, the project will still generate significant economic impact for the city in the billions and direct financial benefit to the taxpayers over the term of the potential agreement. We believe these updates reflect a true partnership and a desire to work with the community. And now, I'd like to give my partner the floor, Robert Frisbee. Thank you.
Thank you, David. The proposed downtown revitalization is not about unchecked development. It's about putting growth where it belongs, near transit, jobs, and civic spaces. By concentrating the right uses, residential, office, and civic, around the Bright Line Station and creating walkable streets, we can reduce car traffic and shape a truly connected city center. This plan has already evolved based on your feedback. Building heights have been reduced, commercial space scaled back, and new commitments made to expand parks and recreation. This is a collaborative process, and your voices are shaping the outcome. And I want to take some time now with these remaining slides to go through, in specificity, a lot of the changes that have occurred from the last plan to the plan that we are presenting today. On the left, you can see our previous proposal. On the right is the revised plan. And as David mentioned, this plan reduces density, both residential and commercial. It increases green space. It increases recreational use, and it creates greater adjacencies for a lot of the uses within the park spaces, including the playground and, and the banyan trees. So, let me, see, let me walk us. So, the, my pointer's not working, but I'll just talk through the plan. So, starting on the north.
Hold on, Mr. Frisbee. We'll have another pointer, because it's going to be hard to follow, I think, otherwise. Do we have one, please? Hey, Mr. Frisbee, take your time, because, take your time going through, so we can make sure we catch up. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, sorry about that. It's possible I'm, I am holding it.
This is where we need one of those old-fashioned sticks with the chalk on the end. Do we have one?
Great, great. All right, thank you. So, I'm going to get some assistance in the back. They're going to point with, with the cursor. So, we're going to start up at the intersection of Fourth Diagonal and Second Avenue, where we've updated the, the street system, the grid system. You'll see a new landscaped rotary at that intersection. That's to help slow down traffic, create a more beautiful landscape, and of course, a safer experience for the pedestrian. That concept is carried through at all the major intersections along Second Avenue. But then staying up in the north side of the site, you can see immediately to the left or adjacent to the west of Second Avenue, there used to be an office building on that triangular lot. We've removed that entire building and replaced it with, with a park space. The concept is to have a very prominent memorial at the southeast corner of that triangle. Yep, right, right where the dot is, and, and more park space around that memorial. So, that, that really could become an incredible community-designed, true memorial within the park. Then, crossing south of Third Street, we've updated the community center to include tennis courts. This was similar to a plan we presented previously. What you're seeing there are eight tennis courts. There are two courts that face east-west. Those courts, we believe, could, could easily be covered, so you'd have the added benefit of having two shaded courts, and then that no longer creates any issue with having courts that are facing east-west. But what's so great about the adjacencies of this new plan is that just to the south of that, we have a large, open, multipurpose field. That field is 300 feet by 200 feet in, in width, and it could easily house more tennis courts. So, you could have a minimum of eight, but, but you could obviously increase the number of tennis courts depending on what the community feels is best. That open space being adjacent to the community center will serve really well for a variety of uses, including after-school activities, soccer games, but also community events, whether it's a farmer's market or a classic car show. That's just an amazing, beautiful, open lawn space. Adjacent to that space are the five banyan trees. All five of those trees will remain in their existing location. There is a sixth banyan tree up in the northwest corner that also will remain in its, in its existing location. But underneath the, the banyan trees that are adjacent today to City Hall, we plan to move the children's playground to benefit, and I think we heard some of this in public comment, and we so agree how important it is to have children's facilities under shade, and of course, away from power lines. You know, the current playground is, is underneath transmission lines today. In this location, that playground would also be adjacent to the outdoor basketball court, and you can see that just to the east of, of the playground. And then, to the east of that, adjacent to Second Avenue, we're proposing, preserving the Singing Pines historical building and potentially having a children's museum reopen within that historic structure adjacent to the children's playground. So, again, creating those synergies of uses. You can then see just to the north, underneath the banyan trees, we have several small structures, and those structures are designed to create activity within these parks. I know, we were just listening to the, the importance of that at Wildflower Park, but those structures would allow for fitness classes or healthy food options, coffee shops, where people could, could spend time and watch their children playing, or watching people play basketball, or, or if there's an event on the large multipurpose field, again, creating activity and energy that our community-serving uses nearby. You can then see, adjacent to that, on the south of the playground, just to the south of the playground, we've retained that residential building on the corner of Palmetto and Second Avenue to create a real sense of entry into the downtown. On the east side of Second Avenue, we've also retained the multifamily residential building between First Street and Second Street, and that building will continue to have a pedestrian-focused muse or pedestrian street, again, that will be activated with community-serving retail to bring energy to, and vitality to the downtown. Just to the north of Second Street, we have the City Hall, which is remaining in place, but we've added, just to the east of City Hall, a mobility hub that we'll, we'll spend some more time describing in future slides. And then to the north of Third Street, where the hotel used to be positioned on the corner of Second Avenue and Third Street, we've removed the hotel use, because we've heard some, some public feedback against having a hotel in the downtown. So, we've removed that hotel use and replaced it with an office building, again, to maintain some of that energy and vitality that's so important, if this is truly to become a TOD, adjacent to the Bright Line Center. And so, what you can see, there are two office buildings that remain in this plan that are adjacent to the Bright Line Center. The third office building that, that was in the previous plan, we've removed that entirely. That's on private ground, and so we don't want it to be confusing and part of this plan. So, we've just removed it, and it can track on, on a separate, parallel path outside of, of the downtown plan. So, let me continue here. This slide is highlighting all of the public spaces, and what I think is, is so telling about this slide, what you see in gray are the private buildings. So, you can see the residential buildings on the west side of Second Avenue that, that line Crawford Street, and those are the low-rise residential buildings along Crawford. And then on the east side of Second Avenue, you can And then on the east side of Second Avenue, you can see there are additional gray buildings. Those are residential, and then the two office buildings in the north. Everything else that's colored is public space, is in the public realm. And that includes, again, the Memorial Park where we think we could create a really prominent memorial at the corner of that intersection of Fourth Diagonal, potentially moving the Eagle statue or the Eagle Memorial that's out front of the police station. We are considering saving the children's museum, saving tennis in the downtown with a minimum of eight courts that can be increased, as I outlined earlier, creating a dedicated multipurpose field, preserving all of the banyan trees that remain on-site today, and of course, all the other shade trees that are significant on-site. And we're going to add tremendously to the amount of shade and landscaping. It's one of the hallmarks of this plan. It's really creating a safe pedestrian environment that is shaded throughout the entire 30 acres. The mobility hub that is just to the east of City Hall, and again, we'll show all of this in more detail in future slides, the new community center. And we heard in public comment earlier about the importance of maintaining a post office in the downtown, and so we wanted to suggest that we could provide a post office within the downtown on the new government campus if that's a positive to the residents. And then, of course, maintaining a police substation and a new, beautiful city hall. On this slide, you can see the private components of the plan, the residential buildings that are in yellow, again, the low-rise, three-story residential that creates that very sensitive buffer along Crawford, adjacent to the single-family low-rise residences to the west, and then how the plan steps up as it crosses over Second Avenue with the majority of that taller density on the east side of Second Avenue. And you can see the commercial uses in the northeast corner of the plan, those blue buildings, the two office buildings. So again, dramatically reducing the commercial component of the plan by taking out an office building and also removing the hotel, and then also removing the residential building that used to be where two of the banyan trees are and where the children's playground is now being proposed. That entire building has been removed. And then on the north side of the large multipurpose field, we've also removed the residential building that was situated there. So our total residential units have gone down from our initial plan, that was about 1,100, to our most recent plan, which was 900, down to this latest update, to 740 residential units. This is an axonometric showing the entire campus, looking from the southwest, looking to the northeast. And again, you can see on the west side of the plan, the community center, the tennis courts, the large, open, multipurpose field, the children's playground adjacent to that, yep, the banyan trees, the new children's museum, and then how we're protecting all of that with pretty, with beautiful buildings along Palmetto, really creating a sense of entry and arrival into the downtown. We're hiding all of the surface parking behind buildings so that you're not seeing it from any of the streetscapes, yet we're making really accessible, safe, shaded parking areas so that people can easily access all of these public amenities, and we're maintaining great adjacencies within the public realm. The next slide does a nice job of showing the low-density, right-sized approach to this plan. You can see in the background over US-1 and over Dixie to the east, some of the taller buildings in the background, and you can see how our plan, again, honors kind of that gradual step up in density and height as you cross over Second Avenue, maintaining the majority of the buildings on the west side of Second Avenue at that human scale, that three-story scale, in particular along that western boundary along Crawford Avenue. And then expanding the public recreation. So as I outlined, we want to not just maintain recreation, but to improve upon it, enhance it in the downtown and as well in off-site locations. And perhaps most importantly, one of the things that has really struck a chord with us, and I know with, I'm sure, every human being, when we talk about, you know, the greatest generation and what they went through to provide a world where we all can live in and thrive, and honoring them is one of the most important things that we can think of in doing, and it's something that this community has deserved for so long, and we really want to help live up to those expectations and create an amazingly beautiful, world-class memorial within this park system. So you can just see some concepts and ideas here, but this would obviously have to be a community process where everyone could come together and think through the best way to honor our veterans and to create not only a beautiful memorial, but then within a lot of these active green spaces, more of a reflective park space that surrounds that memorial, that tells that story and describes that incredible sacrifice. Preserving our banyan trees, we had thought in previous plans that we would try to relocate two of those banyan trees to a prominent location outside of City Hall. After hearing a lot of the feedback and thinking through ways to increase further green space within the site and to maintain shade over some of the most important recreational facilities like the children's playground, we've come up with this new iteration where we're moving the children's playground underneath these banyans and where they can provide this amazing shade canopy, but also have this full activation underneath them. So we're really excited about that update. And then the potential to preserve the children's museum, to renovate the interior of that building, to bring it back to life, to have it adjacent to the children's playground, and to activate it, as you can see, these are some examples in these images. And then to maintain tennis in the downtown on-site. It's unclear how many courts will be built, if any, out west at Meadows, but depending on how many courts are built at Meadows, I think would potentially help to decide how many courts should maintain in the downtown. But we've shown a minimum of eight with the ability to increase that. And of course, you can see the level of quality that we're suggesting that these tennis courts, they would be some of the nicest courts in the state of Florida. And those, sorry, if you just go back for one second, those two southern courts that are running east-west, we can cover those courts so that they would be shaded. Then, yep, the public art. So we've identified several locations throughout the campus where we could have dedicated public art installations. Again, that's going to have to be an iterative process, and those could be installations that are changing, they could be permanent, but it's an exciting opportunity to work with the city to spend time on honoring the cultural components of this site. And then creating amazing playgrounds, and this is something that I've been passionate about, that our whole team is really passionate about from the beginning, is really making a, one of the greatest playgrounds in, not only in our county, but in our state. And when we thought about putting this underneath the banyan trees, it just made for all the more amazing opportunity, not only from an aesthetic standpoint, but from a shade standpoint, from a safety perspective, and of course, the adjacencies to all the other buildings and recreational uses that makes so much sense. And just, yep. Then protecting our neighborhoods with smart growth, and talked a little bit about this in the beginning, but when the Bright Line was voted for and built, the new station in downtown, it was the first part of what would seem to make sense to create an evolution of a transit-oriented downtown, a place where you can create live, living opportunities, working opportunities, connecting opportunities, where you can reduce traffic, where you can create vibrancy and energy revenues for the community, a place where everyone can come and really enjoy, whether they're dining or going to an event, whether they're in a club, whether they're recreating, something for everyone within the downtown. And of course, are some of the outdated civic buildings that need to be replaced, and helping to do that with this public-private partnership and all the benefits that come from partnering with a private group like Tara and Frisbee that has this amazing expertise that can help to guide the city in terms of what are best practices in building an amazing facility that will benefit all the residents of the city and that honors the legacy in terms of architecture and aesthetics. And of course, that process will have to be one that we will go through significant listening sessions and that the city will work with the residents and that we'll work with the residents to understand ultimately how these civic buildings should look and feel. And so in building for the future and thinking about what this downtown could become, how it could be activated, how the green space could be expanded from what exists today, how the recreational opportunities can be enhanced and expanded upon from what exists today, how we can improve upon the aging infrastructure and create beautiful, amazing civic buildings, and to do it without burdening the taxpayers in terms of financing and paying for those structures. And that's this amazing balance of what we're trying to create. We're trying to right-size the plan. We're trying to incorporate all this amazing public facilities and recreational opportunities and beautiful green spaces that are interspersed with activity and places that we would all want to be and be proud of, and to do that in a format where the project can pay for all of those associated improvements. The community center is another great example of these, the heart of this plan, and it will have indoor spaces for gathering, for after-school enrichment, for clubs to get together. It also will have this amazing gymnasium that will be multipurpose. It can be indoor basketball, but it could, again, also be used for any types of activities or events when there's inclement weather, if it's too hot outside, but again, providing this new resource within the downtown. And that indoor basketball will be, again, in addition to the outdoor court that will remain and that we're showing adjacent to the playground. And then this concept of a mobility hub, we're working really hard in the street grid to create protected sidewalks and protected bike lanes, and by protected, that literally have space between, significant space dedicated between those lanes and traffic. And that's done by creating just space between cars, but also a lane of parking in between those protected bike lanes so that you can, you're incentivized to go and move throughout this downtown without taking a car. Along Crawford Avenue, as we described in one of our previous presentations, we're creating a dedicated light electric vehicle lane, so that's for e-bikes and scooters. And then we have dedicated and protected bike lanes along the rest of the streets internal to the site, in addition to really wide or oversized sidewalks that are all completely shaded, whether with architectural details or from large, new shade tree canopies. And so just going back to that mobility hub, that is located on the east side of City Hall. And again, it's not meant to be a bus stop that, where, you know, again, it could be hidden and not activated and could have some unintended negative uses, but rather a very much activated, incredibly resourceful, very useful site where you can park and charge electric vehicles, where you can pick up ride shares, where you know that you're going to have a safe place to leave your bicycle if you're using anything in the downtown. And then just talking about the economic benefits, on the bottom, you can see the previous program. On the right-hand column, that's the gross revenues to the city over the 99-year lease term, so that was projected to be $3 billion in gross revenues to the city, or just over $344 million in net present value to the city. In this previous program, by removing a lot of that density, both residential, commercial, office, hotel, retail, by removing a lot of that, obviously, there are less revenues to the city, and that's the balance that we've been trying to create from the beginning. And when we were originally selected for, to work with the community, to work with the council on this project, I think one of the reasons we were selected is that we were offering, or we were proposing, the least intense plan of all of the plans that were proposed, yet ours was offering the most in economics on a per-density unit basis. And so with our plan, we're still able to provide the city, even with this further reduced format, with significant funding, over $2 billion over the course of the 99-year lease, and $228 million in net present value of that $2 billion in cash flow. So significant money, again, that can help to finance the costs to create all of the amazing public infrastructure in parks and civic buildings that we, that I just went through in those previous slides and that David mentioned earlier. And so in closing, I just want to say thank you again to the mayor, to the council, to the city manager, to staff, and the community for listening to our update. This project will be truly transformational for Boca Raton and the downtown community. With the modified project, the economic benefits are incredibly impactful, allowing the city to enhance, modernize, and add recreation amenities throughout the city and develop a new community center in City Hall. Public input and discussion will remain an important part of this project as it continues, and we look forward to continuing to brief council and meet with the public. We know the public cannot ask us questions today, which is why we will host workshops in the coming weeks on September 29th and October 6th, with more to be scheduled. We invite everyone in this room and anyone who's listening at home who want to learn more about the project to attend and speak with our team about the revisions and the benefits it will have on the downtown and the entire city. Additionally, we are open to meeting in small groups, whether it be HOAs or community groups, so please feel free to reach out to us at any time. As I shared at the last council meeting, my team and I will make ourselves available whenever is convenient. Soon we will launch a website where we will continue to post project updates and opportunities for public participation, as our focus is on designing a project that incorporates your input and has citywide support. And so with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you both. I have a few questions, and I'll turn it over to council members, and then we'll invite the public to speak. First, maybe you can go back to the slide with the green space, the axonometric that had the, you had several of them. It seems like a lot more green space than even what was there before, which was an increase over the fields. Can you talk about the increase over the prior, the middle, and your prior proposal, and how that compares to what's there now for the actual green space, like park space?
Yes. So our goal, without including any green roofs, or they say the tennis courts on the roof of the community center, is to create more recreational space or more green space than what exists today. And so we've accomplished that in this plan, so we're increasing the amount, the square footage, if you will, of green space that the public can use for recreation, whether it's tennis, whether it's the multipurpose field, the playground, the outdoor basketball courts, the in front of City Hall or in front of the community center, those more formal green spaces, or the memorial, more reflective space up in the northwest corner.
Right, so how much, it's, how much greater is it than-
The percentage? I have to go and do that calculation. I know it is more, but I'll have our team make sure that we have that for tomorrow.
So it's more than, it's more than what's there today?
Correct.
And it's obviously more than what you had before?
Yeah, it's definitely more than what we had before, yeah.
All right. On the 200 by 300, the 60,000-square-foot green space, you envisioning that as just an open field, or, you know, the prior iteration had some paved areas as well and a water feature. Where will that be, if anywhere in this plan?
Yeah, so in front of City Hall and in front of the community center, there will be these really beautiful paved areas, there's, with water features, that will create more of a formal entrance into the City Hall or into the community center. The large open space just to the south or adjacent to the community center, that's 300 by 200 feet, we were envisioning that as a multipurpose field, so to maintain it as green open space, so it could be used, again, for simple things, like people that want to go and lay out a towel or throw the frisbee, but more formal gatherings, whether it's after-school activities or a farmer's market or a car show, things of that nature.
Talking about public art, how amenable are you to the concept? Because I, you said you would reach out, you would work in consultation with different veterans groups and other organizations. Is that right?
Absolutely.
How open are you to making a, the public art throughout the project more themed to honor our fallen heroes?
We love that concept, something we've been discussing internally, so absolutely.
We'd had discussions, and I think some of the conversation, we did discussions months ago about a fitting tribute when people started uttering Memorial Park for the first time probably in many years, and for the first time in many people's lives here, we talked about that. So I appreciate that you're willing to explore that as a common theme throughout the site. And then last question, could you just give those dates again? And I don't know if you have a web address yet, but the dates and times, because that went by quick, and I want to be sure everyone hears, and hopefully you'll be getting that out on whatever communications you're sending to.
So the dates are September 29th and October 6th, and I'll make sure that we connect with Andy and staff after this, and maybe we can do an email blast to the community with the locations and the timing and everything.
All right, thank you. Council members, questions? Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you. Thank you very much for really listening to the community. I think there's more work to be done, especially out of, since we learned a lot of things, especially recently. One of the things that I think we started with, again, was your, that I appreciated, was your ability to listen to, you know, what was a sustainable plan, trying to work with the community, the least dense, the most open space. with the community, the least dense, the most open space, and obviously, an economic benefit to the city that offsets its cost and the things that we're, the things that we need to do. Everyone appreciates, and I think acknowledges, that the City Hall has to be rebuilt, that the community center is deserving, the people are deserving of something so much better. And obviously, when we went to the basketball opening this weekend at Sugar Sand Park, and you saw that, you know, obviously, it has to be, you know, it's raining every day, it has to be covered, you know, we need indoor recreation as well. And obviously, we're short very, you know, my understanding from talking to the Boca basketball people, you know, is that concept that we're short of indoor space everywhere because, obviously, as soon as something's outside, it could get canceled. So an opportunity to include those kind of critical needs to community and community wreck on this, I really appreciate. Through the iterative process, however, again, it's, it's, it's hard to design something that people want, right? You're listening in a one-way basis and then designing something else, and now you've changed the plan as, in terms of listening, but what I really, again, today's the first day that I'm seeing this. This is the first time that I've seen this. I heard, of course, we talked that, you know, that this will be coming, but this is the first time that I'm seeing this. So certainly, I'm going to need some time to digest this, talk to the people that I talk to, talk to my constituents, talk to everyone I can about what they feel are the merits of the plan, really go over it. Obviously, to that extent, I don't think, and I think the mayor has already said this, many of us have already said this, that the timeframes are just not realistic at this point. I don't think there's anything that could possibly be presented at planning and zoning on September 3rd, 23rd, or 22nd, whatever that date is. I think that should be pulled because this needs to be evaluated by us, by staff, by the people, to see if this is a valuable plan, viable plan. Likewise, I absolutely appreciate that there's going to be a workshop with the people in terms of going through this. In many respects, for the past several months, I wish that workshop had happened before this plan was changed, because I think that's the right way to do things. We had that one public charrette, and then kind of things went quiet for the summer, as things sometimes do. But now the summer's over, now we're back, now we're ready to get to work. And I really wish that, you know, before I really consider anything, I'd really like that public input session to happen. I really hope your architect could be there, listen to those ideas, because I think there's some opportunities here. A lot of people have favored, and they appreciate that density should be near the Brightline train station. And obviously, there can be some shifts still, there can be some shifts still to have density near the Brightline train station and preserve more of that open space. And I absolutely appreciate the effort that's made here today. We also talked previously multiple times, and we've said it at meetings, about potentially raised space, to have extra covered space options, potentially for festivals or something like that, if the tennis courts are raised. These things can be discussed, they can be evaluated, they could be estimated. Again, it really needs dialogue. So as a first iteration, again, I appreciate it. I do think the process has kind of went off a little bit, especially given recent public concerns. But I absolutely agree 100%. We can do something great to honor Memorial Park, to honor the veterans there, and that could be, if we create something great in this park, that could be the reason that people get off the train. So we never thought about it that way, that the reason for people to get off the train might not be to come see another building, it might be to come see the park. And that's cool, and that could be really cool. And that could be something that we, you know, veterans could respect and appreciate, our children could do that. And to do it in a great playground surrounded by banyans instead of parking lots could be something that we can all be proud of. You know, those kinds of things, I'm happy to work for, work towards. I think it could take some time. I think we've got to stop, you know, worrying about timelines, and we've got to worry about getting the right plan. So I do appreciate the work, there's still a lot more to be done, and I'm happy to continue the discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. May I just pick up on that, too? I also hadn't, thank you for sharing this, first time I'm seeing all of this, although you did alert me that you were looking at some of the changes based on feedback. Obviously, at the last meeting, we said if it takes longer, it takes longer. Clearly, things are going to take longer now, because there's now new sets of, new sets of plans to look at. Can you confirm, though? I think, my understanding is, what, the way you've priced this out, it's still the exact same value per unit? You've just done the same prorata reduction in terms of the number of units, and that's dollar-for-dollar?
Correct.
So the pricing terms are the same?
Correct.
Okay. Are you, give thought to, please, unless you have an answer now, between now and the 29th, what, how you're going to keep communicating this and how you would set up meetings with different individual groups as well?
You mean before the 29th?
Right, maybe the 29th is the first one, but just give thought to how you would sequence that out, because that, that'll be sooner, and people are eager to talk about it, that'll be sooner than later.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Further comments? Ms. Drucker?
Thank you very much. So agree with a lot of the comments that Mr. Wiegler and Mayor Singer just said, and you and I had an opportunity to speak, Mr. Frisby, last week, I had not seen the renderings, but I, it's a lot to digest. I appreciate all the efforts that you all continue to do with the input from the community. Again, the plan has always been in transition, we're always trying to make it better. I absolutely agree with the Memorial Park, the mobility hub, something that I was advocated for. When I see the downtown, when you go to the downtown, I was at Boca on Friday evening, and I finished dinner at 10:30, and I wanted to go to like Meiser Park, and it was really like empty on Friday. I don't know if there was, I don't know if people had other plans, I don't know what was happening. But I can tell you that I had visitors from Destin, and I didn't know where to take them. I did not know where to take them in Boca, because a lot of things were already closing down, and it wasn't even past 11 o'clock. So when I sit up here and I, and people say, "Well, are you going to these places? Are you going to the downtown?" Yes, I do. I was on the Brightline yesterday to Miami, some of you saw that. I was in Boca on Friday. I was in Palm Beach on Saturday, going out different places and seeing what's happening in the community. So I appreciate you trying to activate this space, that's why I've pushed for the wildflower activation for over a year now. More green space is always great. I love the pocket parks, I know people said that, they're not great, but they are. They bring people, people want to just, you know, get off. And one of the things that I was noticing yesterday, actually, when I was coming back, was I stopped at a light and I looked at the underline. And I was like, "They have created this amazing underline, and if you haven't seen this, it's really nice to take your family down south." And they started adding like little kiosks for food, because that was something that was missing. So again, great innovative way to use space. Of course, you mentioned the indoor gymnasium, we did go to on Saturday to Sugar Sand, and there's a need for space. They were playing in half courts, there was the sound in there, so many, many families were out. Of course, I haven't been able to look at the financials, but again, the part that I always focus on is, this is a building for the future, so we can't think about ourselves. We've got to think about my children, their children, and their children. This is not a project for today. Most of us are not going to be here in 50 years unless we, there's other scientific advancements. And the taxpayer burden. I don't ever want to increase taxes. So I hear people in the community, raise taxes, raise taxes, that's not going to be an option for me, I can't get behind a project like that. So I like the no taxpayer burden. And then in terms of the residential, you and I had a candid conversation that I thought where the numbers laid right now were good. The whole part of a transit-oriented development community is to have residential close to the transit, to get people out of their cars, and having people come in and out. So again, haven't looked at all the numbers, but I appreciate you continuing to making it that feeling, because when I see that area, it should be a neighborhood where you can connect and come off the Brightline, and you could go to the Meiser Park, or you go to Royal Palm Place, or you could go to City, to Memorial Park, or whatever we decide to call, call this area. And it's all one connected area. That is what a downtown is. And if that's not what you like, then that's not an area for you to be in. It's an area that I like to be in, because I like that kind of vibrancy. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about the plan. The input sessions that are going to go out to the community, I think, are really, really important. And again, when we picked you off to be our partner, this was one of the reasons that I voted for this project, because you have been a partner, and you are listening, and you are making changes as we go. Thank you.
Further comments? Ms. Eckles?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you both for the presentation. I appreciate it, and I appreciate that you have been listening. I know you have all along, but not everybody gets to speak to you. I'm sure a lot of people tomorrow will get the opportunity to speak to you. And I also like that you, that you've really been open to things, you've been, obviously, this is, I don't know, the third iteration that we've seen of this, or, and I'm sure we'll see more. So a couple of the questions that I just wanted to ask, that other people touched on, what are the orange, maybe I missed it, what are the orange buildings in this?
Yes, so those are just placeholders for structures within the banyan trees that could create community-serving retail opportunities. So a coffee shop, a food truck, a fitness area.
Okay, okay. All right, so there's that. I just also wanted to, in this current plan, you are still below the current height limit in downtown?
Correct.
Okay. And one of the things you touched upon, one of the slides, the slides with the civic legacy, I think it was the picture of the City Hall, a, you know, conceptual photo for the City Hall, which, you know, a lot of people have reacted to and said it's a little modern, but what, that is just a conceptual. And we have not, as you said, spoken about architecture yet. And when we do speak about architecture, you're going to be working with the city and the residents regarding plans for architecture. And one of the things you said in this slide is preserve what matters. And as you've heard, a lot of people, that means preserving what matters means park space, it means the city's history, it means our country's history. And I think all of that needs to be melded into what the future of this actually looks like. One of the other questions I wanted to ask, and the mayor touched on it, as far as the pricing terms are the same, and you said yes, does that include, is there a component still of affordable housing?
I believe there is, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because that is an important component and something in our very first meeting, when Cody Kroll came here, that was one thing that he touched on, and I thought that was very important to all of us as well, because there is no affordable housing in the downtown, and want to keep that. And, you know, as far as what everybody has said, and Mr. Wiegler said, we need more time, because this is the first time that we're seeing all this. So we'll need time to look at the merits of this plan. I met with a lot of people last week, and one of the people I met with is sitting in the audience today, and they happen to live in Library Commons, and I know this is down the road, but that neighborhood in particular is concerned about being cut off from the park and the amenities in the downtown. There is a, currently, they have a pocket park, and then they have a covered walkway that leads into the downtown, and they just want to really make sure that that is not cut off. So I know you said that you will make sure that it's not, that it will be, will be part of the new plan. I also like that you have taken out of the plan trying to move the banyan trees and keeping them where they are. I know that's another important part of preserving what matters. So thank you for listening, we'll keep working with you guys. I agree that October is, you know, the timeline, the timeline will be when we get it done, and you're working hard towards getting that done, and this is a lot of changes. And so I thank you for bringing this forward.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, thank you. I'll save my comments for a little later, but I do have a few questions, guys. First, I saw that you, or I think maybe it was, Mr. Frisby, you mentioned that there would be a reduction in the retail component of the plan. I don't think I saw any metrics associated with that. Could you tell us how much of a reduction there will be in the retail and where from, like where on the plan?
Yes, so it's a significant reduction in the retail. So, not going to use the pointer, because it doesn't work, but where the five banyan trees are along Second Avenue, there used to be a residential building that mirrored the building that you can see along Palmetto. And at the base of that building, we had significant retail experience on Second Avenue, and again, on Second Street. By removing that, we've obviously taken out that retail. There was also meaningful retail underneath the office building in the northwest corner of the, of the site, where we've removed that building and put the memorial. So additional retail that was lost there. And then the retail under the office building just to the east of what used to be the hotel, there was more retail there that, under that building, and that building has been removed. So I think in total, we went from about 140,000 square feet of retail down to somewhere closer to 80,000 square feet. So again, what we're trying to do is, is still make sure that we can maintain a real sense of place where there's activity and energy and people want to be there. At the same time, though, we're reducing the traffic counts, you know, significantly, not only because of the TOD nature of the site, but by continuing to reduce the intensity on the site by removing commercial uses and residential uses. And then, of course, by that children's playground, that area, we're creating some of those small retail amenities, such as a coffee shop, or a food truck, or a fitness studio.
Thank you. So now, on, there were changes made in this newest iteration to a bunch of the quadrants here, sectors, I guess you could say. On the northwestmost sector, the one that faces, is adjacent to the diagonal.
Yeah.
That is where now you're contemplating having a memorial in that, like the small triangle there. How many residential units would remain in that quadrant, though? Not quadrant, in that sector?
So if you, if you were to look at the three-story low-rise residential that is in that sector, and then comes down on the south side of the community center along Crawford, that's about 350 residential units.
Okay.
330.
330.
Yeah.
Let me see what else I have here. Does, you had mentioned, and you mentioned this last time, that when you were chosen, you had said, both a meeting ago and then today, that one reason you felt was because you had offered the most per unit, right?
Correct.
Per residential unit? That was when you all were contemplating apartments as being those residential units, right?
That's correct.
Has that, is it the case, though, now, that you all are contemplating condos as part of those residential units?
Yeah, so one of the things that we've been discussing is having, again, a mixture of not only uses but ownership, because we think that that, again, creates a better sense of place, a better community. And so the building in that south, a building along Palmetto and Second Avenue, that building, we think is an interesting concept for, for sale residential, but we would not be asking the city to purchase the ground, it would still be on a ground lease. And so what we're trying to, some of the...
160 units?
Yeah, it's 160 units.
Are condos contemplated in any of the other residential buildings?
They are not, no.
What impact, if any, does this most recent change have on the phasing plan that you all have outlined previously?
Yes, I think that's something we should have mentioned, because we think it's a positive that we were trying to work into this, which was really making sure that that first phase delivers all the, the most important components of the plan, a real critical mass. And of course, the more we can deliver sooner, the more revenues that we can bring forward, and the sooner we can bring those revenues forward, the better off everyone in the city is. So what this allows us to do, by reducing that density and by kind of concentrating the majority of the intensity on the east side of Second Avenue, it allows us to really look at the entire west side as, as one, as phase one, and that includes all of the civic uses on the east side as well, so the, the community center. And then looking at the two office buildings as the second phase, but of course, you, you know, one of the most important things about those office buildings and the reason that they're there, not only because of the adjacency to the Brightline, but the job opportunities that they create. And I know we've heard from so many people that they want their children to be able to come back to the city, to be able to live here, to be able to have jobs, to be able to afford to live here. And not only will our affordable, dedicated affordable units be units that, that obviously are more attainable, but when you look at the three-story, human-scaled residential type, you know, when you look at kind of the missing middle of how... you know, when you look at kind of the missing middle of housing, that's the missing middle. And if you, and that's where that typology, even at market rate, is going to be more attainable, if you will, on the affordability spectrum than a high-rise or a tall luxury building. But so the point to your question is that we think we can do more sooner in this plan and therefore bring forward more of those revenues.
Have you communicated that to staff in a, like an update to the phase plan, phasing plan?
Yes. And if it hasn't, you know, we've been feverishly working on this over the last two weeks. And our architects have been calling us every 30 minutes, all day Saturday, all day Sunday, you know, every weekend. So if there's things, as you all have said, you know, we need to push some of this timing back. And if we haven't, you know, gotten some of those details, we absolutely will get them to staff.
I think the last question I may have for now is maybe one for staff, but I suppose it's for whoever's undertaking and overseeing these things. What, the changes that are being proposed now, what impact will that have on the due diligence that we as staff or you all as the developer have been doing in terms of traffic, in terms of infrastructure, in terms of those kinds of things? What's going to need to happen on that? Maybe that's a question for Mr. Lukasik.
Thank you, Councilmember. So, you know, certainly from a traffic perspective, we're going to have to reevaluate. So first time we've seen the changes in density, or heard about the changes in density was Friday. And the location of the uses has to be evaluated, too. So we'll have to be reevaluating what impact that has on the road, all the surrounding roadways. Not impossible. A lot of the formulas are already put together. A lot of the, a lot of the work has already been done. It's a matter of, you know, just plugging in some new numbers and just making sure that the distribution is correct. I'm sorry, you asked me about traffic. What was the second one, infrastructure? So, you know, some of the infrastructure won't change. We're still going to have the same water, sanitary sewer, some of the same stormwater demands, maybe not quite as much of demand because of the additional green space. But a lot of those will stay the same as it relates to roadway infrastructure. You know, we're still going to want to evaluate that. We were focusing predominantly on multimodal strategies. So I think those still need to be a critical component of the project overall. I don't know, I don't think there's necessarily any, you know, and the changes in the plan are going to necessarily change some of staff's perspective in terms of what's required in terms of those multimodal opportunities. So I think from that perspective, you know, we'll still be kind of maintaining that same course as we're moving forward with the evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Lukasik. That does bring to mind one last question, if you all don't mind. What, in what way, if any, does this new plan and the changes to it affect the contemplated responsibility for the cost of the infrastructure and the cost of the government facilities? Like who pays what and when?
Yeah, I don't think it's changing our, the way we're thinking about that. And again, we want to make sure that the projects themselves are going to be required to have pretty significant impact fees on their own. That in addition to the infrastructure that is kind of within the pad of each of those buildings that those projects already have within their budgets. And then we'll continue to work with staff to make sure that there's enough funding for the rest of the infrastructure.
That concludes my questions. Thanks.
Other questions? If not, we'll open up the floor to public request. I do have two cards for this item, Jonathan Ungian and Brett Lassen. There you are. And then anyone else can speak after that. I just had the two cards.
Jonathan Ungian, 6501 Congress Avenue. So first thing I want to point out is the Bright Line deal. I don't think the city necessarily got behind the Bright Line deal and was all for it for the fact that down the line, it would give the city the excuse to develop a whole lot more. I think that's an important point. So regarding the financials, especially now hearing condos, hearing, you know, down the line, additional homestead exemptions, things like that, maybe property taxes going away. How would that affect the city's financials? There seems to be a lot of changes. I did hear initially, it was $65,000 a door. That was in the financials. I heard Mr. Thompson asking that question. From what I understand, and I actually, I can play it for you. CBRE was stating, you know, whether it was 50,000 a door or 20,000 a door, 65 is more. I'm just curious, in the analyzation by CBRE and the feasibility, if there was any concerns with that, especially now hearing affordable housing. I know that's on the lower side of any of those per-door costs, so just a question. City Hall, we got the building we're going to have over here. We've got this building here. If we're paying for these costs, I don't know how the community feels, but is it necessary to have a ceremonial city hall and spend all that money? Maybe we can do more with it, make another park, do something else. But if the city's paying for it, is that necessary to have a nice shiny room for you to meet? Will it be big enough to fit everybody if there's a movement similar to this in the future? Because we added a couple more rows in the back, good to see, but still not enough to fit our community. Old people were leaving because they had no place to sit the last meeting. Mr. Mayor, Ms. Drucker, I wish you would engage the community the way that Ms. Naklis and Mr. Wigder, for example, do. I don't think that happens. I think it should be better. You should respond and listen more to the community and be engaged with them. I'm not against development, as I think you all know, but many are. And the reality is, is you need to engage the community more. You need to listen to the community more because there are a lot of people that are not for it and you need to do the things that will win them over. And I've heard great things about you both from the development community. So nothing personal in anything that I say. But like I said, there are still questions. Are those tennis courts hard versus clay? They look green in one, they look red in another, you know. And I know Ms. Morrow, that's important to her, but listen, hear, engage, win these people over. Some won't be won over for anything. But hear them. And it's good to see that you're engaging and moving forward with a plan that hopefully can win over more people as we go. Thank you.
Brett Lassen, 641 Northwest, 10th Court, Boca Raton, Florida. Mr. Mayor and council members, thank you for letting me speak. Mr. Frisby, I'd like to thank you for finally listening to what we've had to say all along. It's a step, a small step in my mind because my big concern is I live 10th Court, which is seven blocks west of the current city hall and two blocks east of 12th Avenue. And the last projection was showing, from the traffic study the city did, was showing 8,600 trips a day additional with your last proposal. Now, I know you cut down some of the residential and some of the retail, but my problem is, is no matter what you do, the people that are coming out of that are still going to be filtering through our communities, Lake Floresta, Old Floresta, any way they can to get to Palmetto, Glades, Camino, wherever they have to go. And that's the big issue that we have, is that we're going to see more traffic in our neighborhoods. And there's no way you can stop it unless we put up gated communities around there, which I know is not going to happen. But it's a step, but I still think that we need to look at this more. And maybe it still needs to be a little bit less density in this project. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me and thank you very much.
Ms. Morrow?
A lot of people play tennis in the United States. I always talk about tennis. 18 million people in the United States play tennis. The USTA has the most, the most adults in competition playing. That's the United States Tennis Association. They have over 300,000 adults that play tennis and compete. These are serious people. They live in our neighborhood. I know two of them. They go all over to play, all over the United States to play. The developers talked about tomorrow giving us the percentage of green space. Also, I'd like to know if tomorrow, the developers and the city could give us some real numbers on what the 31 acres are appraised for? Because that's normal in any kind of lease. Number two, they keep talking about the highest percentage of unit per apartment that might be turned into condos. Now condos makes people not happy on city, land, leased, sold, whatever. So, and also flyers. If we're going to have a big, open house thing to let people know about this, there's 100,000 people that live in Boca Raton, 103, according to Scott Singer. Every single one of the people should get a flyer from the city saying 31 acres is up for a 99-year lease. We have a picture in our family of five generations in less than 100 years. So that means they're having their children too soon. But, but not now. So what do you call it? 99 years is a very long time. When I see a CVS or Walgreens go up and lease the land, these businesses usually lease for 15, 20 years. Why is this lease 99 years? And also about Bright Line, I have to talk about Bright Line. Bright Line is now considered a junk bond by the S&amp;P. It's been downgraded because they do not have 400,000 participants riding. Only thing that has increased is from Miami to Orlando. That's up 14%. But by October of 2025, they will not meet their quota of having a 400,000 riders. And so you need to look into that. Because if you're basing all this on Bright Line, and Bright Line doesn't stop anywhere except Miami and Orlando, thank you.
Ms. Shutter?
Holly Shutter, 264 Northwest, 7th Court. Thank you for your time today. I was wanting to know what the estimate was if the city renovated and rebuilt city hall and the community center and memorial park ourselves. It appears that we are taking approximately 50 million from the golf course funds to relocate the existing recreation and memorial park. 17 million for a new city office building. We're putting millions in tax rebates to build out road infrastructure to serve these private uses. We might be paying for part of the parking garages for the office space. And we're building the city hall and the community center first before we ever see a dime. So I'm just wondering, why aren't we doing this ourselves? Why are we selling our property? And I do want to know how much the appraisal of that land is. I really think that this is our land and we should be doing this ourselves. Thank you.
Buffy Tucker, 431 Northeast, 10th Terrace. Where to begin? This is a lot of information thrown at us right now. I think we all need to be cognizant that there's an October 28th deadline for all of this. You all keep saying that you're going to push this deadline. We need to hear that concretely. The fundamental problem here is that we don't trust you. Okay, we, this has been a moving target for months now. It's changed many times. So when you all want to say to us, you've talked to us or talked about it 30 times or whatever it is, this is a perfect example of how we have not had a master plan to even digest and pick apart and be able to comment on. This is what's not fair. And when you want to say that this was a quiet summer, well somehow or another, those of us that work full-time and have families managed to work full-time in front of the downtown library and we reached 5,200 residents over a quiet summer. And they actually came and signed our petition. That's incredible. So when you want to say that you've reached out to us as the public, we have done your jobs and reached out to the public. And now we are representing them, which is not our job, but I will do it if it needs to be done. We don't trust you. I will say that as of the March meetings, Mr. Thompson has spoken out against this project. I do want to make that known and that has been consistent. So I do appreciate that even from the beginning, we were listened to by Mr. Thompson. I would invite the public to look at those March meetings because the way we were spoken to as citizens during those initial meetings was appalling. It was appalling. And we've had to go get international attention, which is not exactly what we want to do, but we've done it because it's been necessary to be heard. That's really unfortunate. That's all I have to say.
Martha Parker, 64 Northwest, 7th Street. I just had a couple of questions and hoping you can kind of clarify. Mrs. Drucker, you had mentioned and were asking about the recreational facility mapping in the last meeting. And obviously, there's changes with this. And I do think that that is really important to consider. I've been having people ask me a lot of questions about different pieces, the children's museum moving, which now, who knows where that's going. There's been some talk about trees and Sugar Sand Park getting ready to be cut down, whether it was being marked for surveys or whatever. I really think that some of the movement of moving the recreational facilities is giving the appearance in the public that this is a done deal, which you continuously are saying it's not. So I think that it's really important, as we're considering this plan, we have to consider, we can't be moving forward on moving all of our recreational facilities at a large cost to taxpayers until we have a final plan on what we're going to do because it is really creating a lot of confusion in the community. So I do think that that's really an important thing to have. And I do think that if we're incurring costs on making some of these relocations right now, that you ought to consider stopping it until we have the plans finalized. Thank you.
John Pearlman, 498 Northeast, 8th Street. It's amazing to me that these guys are still sitting here after what's come out on this. It's incredible, especially such a dishonest partner who did not disclose in their litigation history and their January 9th proposal to the city, one of the biggest, probably could be the biggest lawsuit in one of them in the history of the United States, didn't even include it in their deck on the slide of litigation history. With this plan, you are still privatizing a World War II memorial park to build apartment buildings and condos. The park needs to stay as it is to honor our veterans and needs to stay public land and a public park. When the park was dedicated by the 1947 council to World War II, recreation facilities were instrumental to their vision. In that same 1947 meeting, they motioned to finance and construct the original ballfield of Boca Raton built in 1948 and which is still on the park, a historic landmark, and you plan to destroy it. And the park still stands as an oasis for recreation within our downtown, the most concentrated part of our city, and much needed for the residents there. And this is what the founding fathers envisioned, a park full of recreation to honor our World War II veterans. War II veterans, which you are destroying in this plan. You are destroying almost all the recreation of the park, the original ballfield of 1947, as well as the second ballfield. You are reducing the number of tennis courts. You are destroying the Tim Huxholt Skate Park. All of those recreation facilities in the park needs to remain untouched, and it needs to stay there. And somehow, you have the audacity to say that public spaces are increasing. The Boca Raton residents are smart. We will not fall for that. Mr. Singer, you talked about our national and international news coverage of the destruction of the World War II Memorial Park as, quote, in your recent email, rumors of bulldozing a monument that never existed. Mr. Singer, the 17-acre Memorial Park is the World War II Memorial, and it is being destroyed and put into the hands of private developers to profit from as part of this plan, which is a dishonor to all veterans of Boca Raton and all veterans across the entire country. And hundreds have emailed us from across the entire country, have emailed us, called us, texted us, voiced their support, offered to contribute money in our efforts to save Memorial Park, and are frankly disgusted and enraged by what you are doing, the destruction of our World War II Memorial Park. Stop it. Get these people out of here. We don't want to see them anymore.
Further comments, public request? All right, we'll close the time for public requests. Gentlemen, do you want to respond to any of the questions that were asked of you? I'm trying to think what there was. Some were asked of staff, which we'll work on.
I think one of the questions was whether the tennis courts were going to be hard courts or clay courts, and the answer is clay courts for sure.
Okay. Very well. Let me respond to a few points. We obviously have a disagreement about Memorial Park. What has been problematic for me, I use the word monument, you switch to memorial. There is no monument on that site. The Historical Society has confirmed that there is no monument on that site. And in 1953, the city erected a monument where we have diligently and faithfully honored our fallen heroes every single year. We will continue to do so. What I think we're talking about now with actually dedicating Memorial Park, which was referred to in minutes, there's no signage there, actually will give greater honor to our fallen heroes and those who served. And in terms of Memorial Park, it was dedicated, as the Historical Society confirms, as an area, as Mr. Brown relayed last time, as an area where there was a water tower. Buildings were added over time. It is not a static 17-acre park that has remained unchanged. What I find here, and I get some people don't want to see any privatization there, but this would actually give usable space. I've talked to people even today who played on those fields and said, they were subpar then. So Ms. Tucker, to answer your question, I think it is important that we do upgrade our recreational facilities for a softball. And I think that's important regardless. To answer another question, and I'm happy to say it now, I think it's clear that we're not going to have an October 28th vote on this matter. We can poll the council here, but given what we've just seen, there's no way that that's going to happen. Mr. Wigder mentioned about a P&amp;C meeting that's slated. I don't think that's going to happen either. And if we get consensus on that, we can give clarity so that we have more of these discussions. At least, I'm seeing a lot of heads nod on that. Please, yes. All right, so head nods on that. I get that there's objection to this. I get that there's a lot of objection. We'll work to restore trust. But I don't think it's helpful to try to use the memory of fallen heroes. And I'm not saying you said rumors. Rumors said, rumors sped around. I've had to correct the record from a lot of people. I'm not saying, I'm not saying anyone said anything. But once something is said, it quickly spirals, and I don't think it's a good look for our city. I don't think it's reflective of our city forbears, who were here and quickly never built a war memorial for reasons that aren't clear there. They built it elsewhere, they built the monument elsewhere, where we will continue to honor our fallen heroes, and I think with this site, do more. And that's regardless of whatever happens here with Tara Frisbee or not. We have an opportunity to correct a record that has gone uncorrected for all these years. There is no even signage at that area for Memorial Park. You can drive around, you don't see those words on any monument. We can fix that. And I think this is an opportunity to do so. Mr. Thompson, you said you wanted to make a comment.
I did, yes. A couple of things. One is, I appreciate the changes that are being made. It does seem, and I can certainly understand why the residents feel like, or they're feeling a bit of whiplash, because I, just like you, saw this today for the first time, and that's kind of tough for us to distill and understand everything right in the middle of a meeting. So it's not the ideal way that this would take place, but I understand. I think I was hearing from my colleagues, and I heard from my colleagues today, that they all said that the October timeline is not realistic. I am delighted to hear you all say that. I have been saying that timeline was not realistic since March, one of the meetings that Ms. Tucker referenced. That was April, May, June, I think that's six months ago. And I've repeated it a bunch of times since then, much to the chagrin of some folks I know. Yes, that timeline is not realistic. It was never realistic, and of course, it should be delayed. But beyond that, I think one more thing is worth mentioning that whenever that final vote takes place, whenever it is, whether it's this year or next or whenever, it needs to be conditioned on approval by the voters. There is a mechanism to make sure that that happens, and I insist, and I will be continuing to insist that it happens in that way. That's all I have.
Very well. Further comments? Mr. Wigder?
Thank you. Again, I do agree with Mr. Thompson here. This is the first time we're seeing this, and in terms of the digestion of it, it takes, it will take some time. Ms. Tucker, Mr. Pearlman, I appreciate your sentiment, and I will, I will work to restore your trust because obviously, it was, it was never intended to breach that. The idea is to try to improve an area which is in desperate need of improvement. You talked briefly about the city can just do this ourselves. And initially, the city tried to do so in 2017 and 2019 through 2019. There was an original plan that looked to do so. It was $200 million at that time. In today's dollars, it's 255 or 300 million dollars, perhaps more with construction increases. The previous council, a couple numbers of which are still here, didn't agree with that. It also relocated every park because you had to build the buildings where the other ones, you know, in the fields and whatnot. And so they didn't move forward, and the Brightline came forward after that, which everyone supported, and everyone in the community supported, and what that means, and a couple people talked about that. But in looking at doing this ourselves, one of the big things that impacts me and impacts our role here as fiduciaries is making sure we are being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. And just paying it for ourselves would place an undue pressure on taxpayer dollars. Mr. Zervis has talked about often, and I'm sure there'll be conversations coming up soon, that in terms of unrestricted funds, we don't have this, an access, an unlimited access to unrestricted funds. These funds are for our water, our pipes, our sewers, our police force, our pensions, for public recreation, for those things. We've seen just in the news today, yesterday, devastation in Boynton Beach for failing to maintain their water situation. These people are boiling water now and drinking out of, you know, bottled water. Of course, you've seen very, very recently in Fort Lauderdale, now they have to pass a $300 million bond referendum just to fix the flood control system because they haven't maintained it. We've been so fortunate with Mr. Brown, Mr. Zervis, Mr. Arnell before him, and the good fiscal stewards of the city, that they have been taking care of those pipes and water systems and reserves and putting those things away. So, you know, when I evaluate these things, and I am continuously evaluating them, the cost-benefit analysis that I consider is to make sure that the public is not damaged in terms of the reserves, because we have a redundancy of systems, we have a redundancy of reserve funds. And that is something, the financial burden to the taxpayers is something we have to consider. So we've got to find a way to work together to preserve and enhance this park without overburdening the taxpayers. As Mr. Thompson said, as we all just said, it's going to take the right time to do that and have the right plan. But we should all be working on something where we can all embrace that so we don't have to overburden the taxpayers. We have some other really big things going on in the city that just require attention that we cannot postpone. We talked about the CRA. We're going to talk about the police station. Those are separate things that are technically not connected to this downtown plan. They must happen irrespective of them and how we pay them, pay for them as a city. With pressure in Tallahassee on CRAs, with pressure on Tallahassee in tax bills, gives me concern that we've got to keep an open mind here and work together to establish public's trust and do that. I think it's going to take time. I think we've got to do it right. And I think at the end of the day, with the, with the public movement that you did do, and I apologize for poor choice of words, what I, I didn't mean your work, I meant the work of that, that the developer did not redo their plan in the, in the summer. But the idea is that, and then I do believe that this will be done eventually by a public vote, and I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, everyone. A lot of you know me from this community because I've served in this community before I was elected, people that are here today in this audience. I love Boca, I love to serve. This is a very thankless job and one that we all chose to do. We chose to be elected. I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made today. Of course, the timelines are the timelines. We have to extend them. I'm in full agreement to extend the timelines. The terms of the referendum, we've had a process in place for many years with other referendums. We're following the process. If it, it should go to the voters, it will go to the voters, it'll be on the ballot. So that's not anything that we are not addressing. But I don't want to play politics on this dais. I want to make sure that we're still playing for the people. So there's a lot of politics being played up here. And if you know me, you know I don't do politics, I do people. So when everything is processed with the petitions, with the signatures, et cetera, et cetera, if it goes on the ballot, it goes on the ballot. In addition to that, I know we always talk about the 5,000 people that are out here, and I appreciate all those people coming. I appreciate you guys coming to these meetings. There's 103,000 people that we have to be fiduciary responsibly for. So I think that Ms. Shutter, you mentioned $50 million that we had earmarked to the golf course. So we have money that's allocated for certain projects, and you can't take it from one project and put it on another. Mr. Wigder mentioned Fort Lauderdale, and that was one of the examples that I was going to use. What they did with their bond is they borrowed against our reserves, and then they bellied up. So they couldn't, they couldn't pay back their bond, and what happened? They had a major sewage leak, and there was poop, I say that word on the, all over Fort Lauderdale. So we take great pride in making sure that our reserves go to the right things because they're earmarked for years to come. We've been working on our ice sip, we've been working on our water treatment plant. Every time there's a new law that comes from Tallahassee, which sometimes you guys don't even hear about, we have to make all those fixes, whether it's to the water, the sewer, our parks, et cetera, et cetera. So again, my job is not only to protect the downtown residents, but all the residents that contribute to the tax base. In terms of the community garden, I want to get more information on the community garden. The community garden used to be at the Brightline. I'm very familiar with the community garden because I used to help with the community garden. I'm a junior leaguer, everybody knows that. The garden was, the nonprofit that was involved with the community garden was a junior leaguer, and then we passed it to, which is now called a Susan Welchel, after a junior leaguer and also a former mayor. So I want to understand. And I have heard a lot about the garden as of late because it is a very big project. I had a plot. Definitely don't have a green thumb. There was a lot of work. No, 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 no. So I did, I had a, I had a plot at the garden, and there's more to it. So I want to understand some of those changes. And I appreciate the gentleman, he's not here right now, that came and spoke on behalf of the gardeners. In terms of the children's museum, also want to, going to task that with Mr. Brown, I know you're putting together some information that I've requested with Mr. Lucasek to understand the children's museum. So maybe some of you know or some of you don't, I was vice president of the children's museum and treasurer of the children's museum for, I think, four or five years in my past life. And it was very expensive to operate the children's museum. So we need to make sure that, again, if that's where we decide to go, that we have a plan in place for that. So I think I want to have further conversation on that. What else? I think, I think those are the questions that I had from some of the comments that were made in the last few minutes. Thank you.
Counsel, could, could I make just one more comment as a response to some? So I just want to say, some of the comments that we're listening to are, you know, they're full of vitriol, and I know that that's probably coming from a place of deep passion and caring about the community, and I respect that. But I just want to remind everyone that we are here to listen. We, we understand that this is going to take as long as it takes. We are not trying to, to force this on anyone. In fact, Councilman Wigder mentioned that this will likely go to a public vote, and we welcome that process. We're here spending a lot of our time, our resources to try to collaboratively design something that we believe is truly in the best interest of this community and of for future generations, something that we can be proud of, that this community can be proud of. And we feel really strongly about that, and we don't want to develop anything that we don't feel that way about. And I just have to say something about my partner, David, because I know he's too good of a guy to ever say it himself, but I think some of these pointed attacks, I'm just, I don't think that they're very constructive. David had nothing to do with the construction of the Surfside Building nor its collapse. He built a building nearby, an incredible building, five years before its collapse, and at no point was he trying to hide the, that really large lawsuit. In fact, that was very public knowledge that everyone was probably already aware of. But just to give you some insight into the incredible person that he is, and I hope he's not upset at me for saying this, but his daughter has been in the hospital for the past two weeks, fighting really hard. And that's why David couldn't be here at our last meeting, and he's found a way to be here today because of how important this is to this community, and he wants to show that he really believes in this community and really cares. So I just, I hope that we can come together on some of these really important topics. We are here to listen, to talk constructively. We care about all the same things that this community cares about, and I hope we can continue to work together to find a great path forward, and of course, as Councilman Wigder said, something that the entire community can, can vote on and get behind.
Ms. Eckles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one of the things that's important to remember, and actually, Mr. Frisbee just touched on it, we put out an offering memorandum, which was basically an invitation to come look at our downtown campus, and it went out all over the world. And I think there were something like, I don't know, hundreds of clicks on, on the application and looking at it. And I think a lot of potential would-be firms frankly got scared away by the competition. So when we ended up with the four in January that we then ranked in February, I just can't forget going back to the two days in February, the 10th and 11th of February, when we had a room full of people, hundreds of people in here and outside, who were all rooting for a plan that had 200-foot buildings and a million square feet of office. And they were all rooting for that plan. And I know some of you were here, some of you weren't, but these rooms were filled with people rooting for that plan. And we didn't choose that plan. We chose a plan going forward that was so much less intense, that was within our current height limit, that with a partner that we thought would really listen to us and have proven so, that they've done that. We are still, as Mr. Martin said at the beginning of when he spoke, this is still evolving. This is still a collaborative process. They are open to doing that. They have met with, with, I've, I've sent people to call Mr. Frisbee and Mr. Martin, and they called them back. They have proven to be a good partner so far, and we are in the middle of the process that we said we were going to be in, and we need to continue this process. If at the end of this process, we don't come up with something that we can vote on, that we can wrap our arms around, that... we can wrap our arms around, that preserves what matters, then it doesn't happen. But we're in the middle of this process now. I think it's important to keep going, to see where we end up. They've proven to be good partners, they've proven to listen. I know so many people have reached out in the last couple of weeks, calling me everything. And if I have not responded to you all yet, I will. I have been walking with people, talking with people, going through different areas, and the input is really valuable. It really is. I'm learning a lot. We're all doing our homework. We're, the financials, I mean, is the really, really big part of this. You know, Ms. Drucker mentioned the community garden, and Martha, sorry about your last name, but you mentioned the recreation facility mapping and the recreation master plan. That is something that we need, and that is something that we've talked about and, you know, something I really want to see. But as far as the community garden, I myself, before I got on council and really up until this past May, ran a nonprofit for 12 years. My nonprofit contributed the shade structure that's on the east side of the community garden. I have been very involved in that garden long before I was ever on council. So, you know, we all care about all of these things, and my brick at our community garden says, "Remember your roots." And I think that that's really important. I think that's something that we all are committed to doing, and I think it's something that our partners, and even up until today, they are committed to helping us remember our roots. And so I'm, you know, I'm still open to see where this all leads. I know we're going to give it some more time as it needs to be, but I really would like us to work together as partners, all of us. Thank you.
We said last meeting that if it takes more time, it takes more time. And I give credit to our partner here for recognizing the potential to respond to concerns. They responded quickly. I had conversations with Tara Frisbee last week about reductions. This is the first time I'm seeing this. It will take more time. We've now said October 28th is not happening. It was not happening in September. And yes, we expect that the public will weigh in. Our goal is not to just stop the conversation. The goal is to figure out ways forward, to see what ultimately may come. And I think today is a sizable step forward. There'll be a lot of evaluating. I appreciate the public outreach that needs to be increased. And I would say, as much as we try to reach out, there could always be more. What I haven't always seen, you know, I've gotten, we have people coming in for the first time, which they're fine to do, but we encourage people. If you have concerns, write. If you have concerns, reach out. I've been sending newsletters personally, and the city's been sending them for many months. And when I sent one yesterday, I got some concerns for the first time. I've had people speaking here multiple meetings whose email I don't have, and had no way to reach out to them unless I looked them up and wrote them up a snail mail letter. So please, if you have concerns, reach out. We will not make everyone happy here, and I know a lot of people are unhappy, but our goal is try to work forward on a plan that makes the greatest sense for our city, knowing that we have an opportunity to create a special place and, in my opinion, add a lot more green space than what's there. If the baseball field was put there in 1947, and we'll fact-check that, it's, I don't think reflective of what, it shouldn't say static as that one site. I think we can add recreation. I think the skating people have recognized that Tim Huxold Park, we can obviously name a new park after him. They want to see something better. And I think we have opportunities to bring something better with vibrancy, with walkability, and poised for the next generation. And it's not without, we take these things very seriously. There are a lot of factors to consider here, but creating a space that really fulfills the vision of the downtown, which had development rights, which has development rights, and this is designed to be within that, which was less dense and less intense than every other proposal we got, I think bears more consideration. So I hope that the word can go forth that we've got more plans to evaluate, more public input, and we'll see where things go. But I think collaboratively, we have a chance to make something more special, and I think ultimately, a lot of people will enjoy. We will have to see if we get there, but I appreciate everyone's participation. And if there's nothing further on this item, then thank you, gentlemen. We'll turn to city manager reports. Mr. Brown.
Nothing more this afternoon.
City attorney reports?
Thank you, no report.
Thank you. Councilman reports, start on my left.
No report.
Thank you, Ms. Eckles.
No, they're for.
Ms. Drucker?
No report.
Mr. Wigder?
I do have a report. Briefly, because last, it was, last meeting went very, very long. I'll talk briefly. Every year so far, I've done some just research statistically about what's happening in the city of Boca Raton. We saw this migration to the city over the past couple of years, especially after COVID. And that analysis continues. It's really not just Boca, it's all of South Florida, really, where you could see, this is a search pattern analysis, and you could see people moving from big urban centers wanting to get down to Boca Raton, or South Florida, really, New York, Washington, San Francisco. And likewise, people are leaving Boca Raton for mostly places in Florida. Cape Coral, Orlando, Jack's, Sarasota, Tampa, again, seven out of the 10 more northern Florida cities, you would equate those to be maybe more retirees trading up. Likewise, the data shows that our average age is getting younger. So what we can see is that more younger families are moving in, some retirees are moving north a little bit. It's at a lesser rate, and in fact, average prices are down in Boca. But we've talked about this, and Mr. Zervis talked about this in our, in the financial presentations, which will continue, that in terms of valuation growth, Boca's really in the middle to the lower middle of the municipal valuation growth. Why? Because we're not adding so many residents every year. We're, 70% of our houses are capped at homestead values, so there just hasn't been a lot of new units. These other cities a little further north, you know, Westlake and Palm Beach Gardens, they're adding many, many more units, so they're able to increase their valuation a lot more than we are. But then when you do a little deeper dive on the analysis, in fact, Boca Raton's new construction growth rate averages at about 1.5% annual over the last 10 years. So again, what we're really seeing here is slow and steady growth in Boca Raton. Boca Raton is popular, but it's not booming. We're just adding pretty much a reasonable amount of growth every year, and like I said, 1.5% average over the last 10 years is significantly below most of those other cities in mid and northern Florida. Because, again, most of our homesteads are capped, we don't have a lot of land. But it is important to reflect that doing all those things fiscally, our staff, our CFO, our finance team has been fantastic, because basically, we're doing a lot without so much increased valuation. As the new taxes on new construction, they help us pay for these things, but there's not so much new taxes on new construction, because we're not building so much. Again, to me, it shows stable, stable growth, you know? We look at the future of responsible growth, many people talk about it, where is that? Obviously, Bright Line is downtown, we're envisioning potentially a little bit more TOD there, but everyone is pretty much consented. What we're doing really is finishing up a neighborhood here, not, you know, not really establishing any new density with any, you know, any large, large structures, super, super large structures here. We're really just finishing off a neighborhood downtown, because why? The right place, the place where there is some space to do so, is in the northern sector of the city, in the midtown sector of the Tri-Rail. We're talking about these improvements to our midtown, the university corridor, the north sector, of course, Tri-Rail proximity will be necessary to maintain this responsible growth, our traffic management, and our conservative fiscal stability. All these things. There's some local transportation solutions there, and now we're looking at Connect, Palm Trans also doing some things, someday maybe Guidant in these northern districts to help us connect the northern districts to each other and reduce traffic. I think this is another focus. We're going to have to get there, and we're going to have to start soon. What does this future look like? The things that I think about, responsible growth, being part of a larger regional transportation, which we're talking about in the future with the TPA and the Regional Transportation Master Plan that we're going to be a part of, potentially some TODs, alternative mobility. We see people get off the train, they're using scooters, they're using e-bikes, they're using things like that to reduce traffic. AI signals, which, again, Boca's very rare, and the fact that we can control our own traffic signals, which I learned from the TPA, which is rare, but helps us improve our situation. So we could look at our comp plan to reflect these goals, recognize the uniqueness of our neighborhoods, preserve them, use the downtown's form-based planning as a model in these other districts, like Plan Mobility, Enhanced Mobility, the CAMD, NOYA, which is north of Yamato and the University District, where there is some space for growth, but certainly a lot more developed infrastructure with three-lane roads and transit. And of course, you know, we've heard it from the people, and we are listening, and we can focus on preserving and improving great things about Boca, like parks, adding more green space funds, there is a land dedication fee as part of our impact fees, we should look at that, maybe we could do more even, and work on ways to pay responsibly for the necessary infrastructure and maintenance of all these things. And potentially, different types of ownership in these other districts. They shouldn't have to be all apartments. We need some homeownership, too, and it's some, in other districts in the city especially. So we are going to have to think about a way, like what the county's done, to potentially have a buyout program in our northern sector or something like that. But to maybe establish a trust fund, like Ms. Eckles said many years ago, so we could start, you know, having a trust fund for some targeted things, which might be affordable, attainable housing, veterans' housing, or even more green space, like Mr. Pearlman suggested, maybe some targeted acquisition to do some of these things. So again, there's some serious opportunities here. Again, things that I think about in this analysis, the staff's been of super great help, especially Mr. Zervis's team and him specifically, to really just sit with me as long as I want to really learn what's happening in the city fiscally. So I appreciate that. There's a lot of work to do together. There's many things happening in the city, and we need to focus on all of them if we're going to plan for our future. So I appreciate you all listening to me, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, I know you had something to add to.
Just a reminder that we have the public hearing on the tentative budget at 6:00 PM this evening, here.
Yes. I was going to say that as well. So yes, we will reconvene for our tentative budget hearing at 6:00 PM, but there's nothing further to come before us. We're adjourned at 4:46. Thank you.